Online. This is Monday, October ninth. It's actually a federal holiday, but if you notice, the county is still up and operating today. Is the hospital going today?
Is the hospital going?
Never closed down.
Nope.
You're kind of like the county.
Yep.
All right, we like that. I'm Commissioner Gaige, I'll be conducting the work session this morning. With me is Commissioner Jim Harvey to my left, Commissioner Sharon Ballows to my right. We're going to start with a action to approve the minutes and or discussion for those minutes held on September twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carriers, let's go to our next agenda item. We're happy to have our M K D hospital friends with us, which is the, this is an annual community report. You've heard this a few times. And we had to have Amber, you didn't give that, or? Amber was the one scheduled on our agenda, but.
Yep, but it will be, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yep. Um, do you have, did we share the presentation?
Sure.
Okay.
Do you have it online or?
I don't think we have it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure they, I haven't seen it.
Okay. We thought it was coming through electronically. Yep, let's shoot Amber. If you want to go on to the next one and we'll get the presentation, we thought it had been coordinated.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yep, otherwise I can just talk through it, but it works better with the visual.
Unfortunately, our next one's a closed session, so.
Oh, okay. Well, let me start talking then.
There we go.
So, so as you mentioned, this is, I'm Judy Williamson. I am M K D's hospital administrator, happy to be here today to give you the annual. So Amber's my assistant.
Okay.
She helped coordinate the appointment. Yep. So, um, as a not-for-profit hospital, we come before you every year to present our gift to the community, our annual report to you of making good on that not-for-profit status. Uh, so as you know, our mission is helping people live the healthiest lives possible. Uh, and that remains our mission. It hasn't changed uh in the last several years. And as you mentioned, last year we did merge with a um out-of-state healthcare system, uh S C L Health out of, based out of Colorado. Uh, but they cover several states into Montana and Wyoming as well. And so this has expanded our footprint. Uh, we now, Intermountain Health is now in seven states, um, including Nevada. So continuing um to grow and expand, but still maintaining the local mission, vision and values uh the exact same way that it has been pre-merger. Uh, and our uh, our uh mission, I mentioned our, our mission. We are focusing on keeping people healthier for less while delivering the best and most caring experience. So looking at quality, cost and access is really critical and important to everything that we do, both locally and at the system level. As I mentioned, we are a not-for-profit um organization and that has not changed and um is continuing the same as we move forward. Just some of our numbers for Intermountain Health. So I shared, we're now in seven states. We have thirty-three hospitals and that includes one that is a virtual hospital. So we still, it has all of the services and resources. So that's where we run all of our telehealth resources out of. So for example, um, not as much for M K D Hospital, but a hospital like Leighton Hospital or Bear River Hospital um has access to specialists out of that virtual hospital. So they have tele-I C U, tele-stroke, tele-neonatology, any of those sub-specialties that are typically at more of our larger trauma hospitals, we now have available uh to our community and our rural hospitals as well. Again, trying to, one of the uh initiatives around cost is keeping patients close to home whenever possible. We can maintain the same level of their quality of care out in the community. We want to do that. And then reserve our trauma hospitals and our referral hospitals for those that truly have to come in person and be cared there. Um, so we have forty-eight hundred licensed beds now, three hundred and eighty-five clinics and about thirty-nine hundred employed physicians and approximately sixty thousand caregivers. So that is across those seven states. And out of those sixty-seven, um, I think just over forty, I want to say between forty and forty-five hundred of those, or sorry, forty-five thousand of those are in the state of Utah. So still majority Utah-based. Um, so for.
Caregivers.
Pardon?
All level.
All level of caregivers. Yep. So that is, we, we consider everyone that works for Intermountain Health a caregiver. No matter if they're at the bedside in a hospital in a clinical role or working virtually from home. Yep. So for M K D Hospital specifically, we have twenty-seven hundred of those caregivers here locally. Three hundred and twelve licensed beds. Um, and we have, oh, I didn't put the new one. We um, I checked today, we have nine hundred uh physicians who are privileged at the hospital. So now all nine hundred of those aren't in our hospital every day. Some of them don't come in the hospital at all, like even our primary care physicians are privileged at the hospital. Um, so that's about nine hundred that have that level of privileging. And then we have an additional five hundred who are telehealth providers. So those are providers that are at that virtual hospital or other locations, um, but still have privileges here so that they can call in and if need be, do a consult and be able to call in and help our providers with patients here. Um, and most of those, most of the nine hundred do actually live um locally within the Weber County area. Um, just some of our stats from two thousand and twenty-two, we delivered twenty-seven hundred babies, did eighteen thousand five hundred and ninety surgeries and our emergency room saw fifty-four thousand four hundred and forty-nine people.
Wow.
So.
There you go, our fifty-four thousand.
Yep. So volumes continue, you know, the, the kind of post-COVID, if you had, some people don't want to quite say that yet, but post-pandemic, we can say post-pandemic, right? Because COVID is still around um and, and something that we're dealing with. But post-pandemic, there was a lot of question of volumes. What, what would things look like? And volumes just continue to grow. Now, some of that is due to growth, um, and some of it is just due to, I think, still some of the pent-up volume. But interestingly enough, it still continues moving forward, um, almost in every department across the hospital. And that's not just here locally at M K D Hospital. Um, our counterparts in other uh communities are seeing the same uh growth continued.
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, as you know, we have a board, we have a volunteer board that um it helps govern M K D Hospital. Uh, with our new infrastructure, we now have, we have an Intermountain Health Board. We have a, what we call Canyons Region. So that really is the legacy Intermountain Healthcare as we knew it, Utah and Idaho. There's a governing board at that level. And then we have a local M K D Hospital um Board of Governors and the chair right now for that is Cheryl Cox. So we have um a, a good group of community members that help govern um the hospital and do that on a volunteer basis. And we are really appreciative for that.
That's me.
Yeah. So some of the numbers um to share with you today, so um our two thousand and twenty-two estimated property tax versus our two thousand and twenty-two charity care um that was provided at M K D Hospital. So the estimated property tax is three million nine hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And the calculated charity care was seventeen million twenty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. And so the clarification on that, um, as, as you guys are probably aware from previous years, with Intermountain Health, we have criteria um for charity care for patients who meet criteria. So our um financial assistance program, uh, any patients can go out and apply for financial aid. The contact information uh for financial aid is on the back of every envelope that is sent out with a bill or communication in it um to patients from Intermountain Health. So very transparent, out on the website. Um, the criteria, I went and checked it today, is five hundred percent of the federal poverty level. And that is calculated on a sliding scale then of what um payments and part of their bill uh that they would be um uh required to pay and what would qualify for charity care. That is different than our bad debt. So charity care and bad debt are calculated separately in two different populations of individuals. So for M K D specific, our charity care cases in two thousand and twenty-two for the gift to the community uh was twenty-two thousand four hundred and six cases um that we took care of in that broad community benefit category. In that community ben- benefit umbrella, we look at the value-adjusted charity care, the community benefit, total gift to the community, our capital improvements, then we have the uncollected bad debt category as well. Um, within those categories, so the community services and education, um, the, the gift there was four hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars. We also have clinics servicing under-serviced, um, uh, uh, yeah, sorry, underserved population, sorry, is four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Health professionals' education to the community was five million three hundred and sixty-one thousand. And then our volunteer services, a hundred and ninety-four thousand to the community. So for um our Weber Morgan County Community Health Needs Assessment that we do every three, I think it's every three years that we do a new one, um, and partner with the local health department. Um, other health experts and public health data revealed three priorities that we've been focused on and working on. The first one was improve mental well-being. The second one is improve chronic and avoidable health outcomes. So again, if you're really focused on people living the healthiest lives poss- excuse me, possible and decreasing the cost of healthcare, that's a huge category that we can actually influence as a community. And then the third one is address and invest in uh the social determinants of health. So two and three kind of go hand in hand. Um, in the past, we've really identified that we've needed to shift our focus in healthcare and that's part of the name change for Intermountain Health is we went from Intermountain Healthcare to Intermountain Health. Uh, and the reason for that is the shift in focus to health and wellness. Most people think of healthcare, once you're sick, then you need healthcare. We really want to shift that we need to be talking about health, wellness and avoidance of chronic conditions. So in the past, and this kind of diagram shows it well, there's a sixty-forty split um in regard to health conditions. So for factors impacting premature death, sixty percent is the individual behavioral and social environment. Sixty percent that leads to factors for premature death versus forty percent of your personal genetics and the clinical care that you receive. Historically, most of our time, energy and funding has been spent on that forty percent. So we've really taken a shift over the last several years to look much more and invest in that sixty percent that is that social determinants of health to try to curb the healthcare cost and those chronic conditions that, that I mentioned. So across those three areas, the improved mental well-being, improved chronic and avoidable health outcomes and address and invest in the social determinants of health, we've been looking at addressing adverse child experiences, addressing social determinants where we can um assist, improving access to timely quality care, influencing internal and public policy, promoting pro-protective beliefs and behaviors and strengthening community infrastructure. And again, none of this is Intermountain Health doing this in a silo. Our number one strategy is to always look for community partners where we can really expand um the resources.
So let me ask you a question.
Sure.
So who do you find in the community as partners that are effective that kind of see your vision?
Got a nice list of community partners. Because this has been a question in the past, right? That, that really looking.
Yeah, that's surprising to me too.
So really identifying who, who do we actually work with? And it depends on which area. Um, which one of the three uh categories that we're focusing on who we partner with. But um really looking for who has.
Cash donations, four million.
Similar, yep, the, the similar mission, whether it's for mental health, whether it is um housing, um homelessness, great diabetes screening, like there, there's a lot of different community partners um that are doing similar work. And if we partner together, we can make a much bigger impact. Uh, we really want to make sure that we are avoiding um competing with somebody else in the community that's doing the same thing. That's never our intent. So that's where I think a lot of our um, uh, board members as well as participating in various boards in the community to make sure that we know our partners and what they're working on and where we can work with them. Would you add any specifics in there, Sarah?
You hit the pre-diabetes screening because we've been trying to get into the Hispanic population. Just because there's been a big barrier trying to get to the hospital or just the language barrier, just lots of different things. And so we've been partnering with different organizations, like we were at the Hispanic um Heritage Festival, just reaching out to that population, just to get them comfortable and having Spanish speakers at our booth. Then just making it more of a comfortable feeling for them to know that they're welcome and.
Yeah.
What services we have and.
Yep. And so if you ever hear of initiatives or strategies coming across your, your um desk that you think might be a good opportunity to partner, especially as it relates to the key focus areas, by all means, reach out to us um and uh and let us know. And we can make that contact and see if we can be working uh with other individuals that maybe not be on that list.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
What about the Seeger, Seeger Clinic?
Yes.
Since we just took a visit up there a couple of weeks ago.
Fabulous new facility that they're working on.
They don't, I don't see it on this list here.
We, we do, well, and I wonder where this list comes from, because there's a lot of other partners, like we have our physicians that work at that clinic.
Yes.
We sponsor events that they host. So we work with them kind of behind the scenes versus.
Good.
Like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, that, you know, that's what makes the community go right there is, let's not reinvent the wheel if somebody's doing it.
Completely.
But you guys are the big dog in the room up here, so, you know, you're going to have to kind of direct traffic to some of these smaller.
Yep.
Nonprofits especially.
Yep. And, and sometimes that's us reaching out to them and sometimes it's them reaching out to us. So always, always looking for that opportunity. And same with our education partners. So that's the other one that we work with really well is the Ogden Weaver um uh Technical College and obviously Weaver State from the education standpoint and um caregivers.
Yeah, true.
Yep. Um, they, we'll, we'll make sure that you get the presentation. So the presentation goes through and uh you guys have, have seen this information before, the um criteria in order to meet the not-for-profit um status designation that we have, that there are the government requirements that we need to meet to maintain that um designation for us. So there is um, there are state requirements as well as federal requirements. So for the federal requirement, it is that community health needs assessment that we do every three years. And again, that is a key one that we partner with, um, especially with the health department because they um do those surveys. And so they have a lot of the data. So their data leveraged with our internal Intermountain Health data really helps determine that China and work with them closely. Um, identification and management of priorities, which are those priorities that we just listed. The hospital activities reported on the Form nine ninety Schedule H and then fifty thousand excise tax per hospital if requirements not met. Then we also have additional state requirements. So there are six standards that are set forward that we need to meet. The County Board of Equalization Conference, gift to the community reporting and our charity plan. So we go through, each slide goes through each one of those and talks about how we meet each of those. Not sure where we are on time. Um, I can go through that or we can just share that with you so that you can read it.
We took up a little bit of your time, so.
I could send you guys that email of.
If you want to send it.
Should have it.
It'd be, it'd be nice to have that for, for our records.
That would be great. So, so.
So from Sarah. Let me know if I can get that.
And again, if, just um also the other clarification about the um, the tax exemption, it is for um mostly the hospital-based services. We have, Intermountain Health has a lot of locations and entities within the community that does pay the property tax.
Right.
So a lot of our clinics, um, not related to Weber, but in Davis County, we have our um system-wide laundry services that are located in Davis. So anything that is not directly related to that hospital-based um uh patient care does cover, does pay property tax. So sometimes people think that Intermountain Health has no property tax and that's not accurate, that we do pay property taxes on a lot of those office buildings um and non-clinical infrastructure that we have.
Yeah, well, you know.
Yeah.
May I, Mr. J?
Yeah, go ahead.
I really was buggered up with this in the very beginning.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, how this all worked. Most people, and, and I'm, I'm one of those most people. Uh, I thought, well, why do we have a, a Mountain Star that pays the property tax? And then we have the uh, uh, Intermountain Health that doesn't pay the property tax. And he finally, he said two words to me that made sense. It's business model.
Yep.
Some of the business, I said, why wouldn't Mountain Star decide to do, that's, it just has to do with the business model and how they choose to do that.
Yep.
And after that, it's all good. So.
Yeah.
Cause I, I, I just found it interesting because I liked, you know, from, from this seat over here, it's all about equity. We need to be, make sure that we're fair and.
Yep.
Uh, but that all worked out just great.
Yeah, it, it is, it is a very good distinction. Both the organizations are good, strong organizations. They are just set up functionally differently.
Yeah, that's it, that's it.
Yep.
Well, as you well know, this is something that gets addressed every year at the legislature in terms of property tax and.
Yes.
And, you know, we, we get beat up on, when I was there, we get beat up on both sides, but you have to look. If you don't look at the benefits back, your donations, your, you know, your gift back to the community.
A lot more than our property.
Seventeen, seventeen million.
So I mean. Like the three.
But.
Yeah.
That's money that we would have to spend as a state and county.
Exactly.
To take care of those people one way or the other.
Yep.
Wherever that is.
With it, within Utah, we do not have, uh, or I think we might have one small number of county-run hospitals.
I thought they went bankrupt.
There's two counties.
So Pangu.
Two counties in the state of Utah, right? Still they have a.
So I, I, I know, I know, I know of Pangu because Intermountain Health has the contract to operate it.
Yeah.
But it is a county-owned and run facility. That's Pangu. Um, and I'm not sure where the other one is because I thought there still was one.
There, yeah, it's, I think it's down in one of those smaller counties.
Yeah.
Leland uh told me about that grand or uh.
Might be grand. I don't know.
Yeah.
Huh, anyway, interesting.
So.
Well, don't worry about this county getting in the healthcare business. We're trying to get out of here.
Please don't worry about it.
We, you know.
You come here because you're worrying, you're going to lose some hair. Don't lose any hair.
Perfect. And we want to be filling that void, right? Like that, that is the mission um uh and vision with Intermountain Health. So we're, we're committed to that model and that approach and, and put everything behind it.
No, I appreciate that. And boy, I tell you, we're just so blessed. Uh, as you look across, across the Wasatch front with the healthcare, you know, obviously Intermountain's a player, University of Utah, but we have the best healthcare. And I, you know, I've had people that moved here from out of state and say, they came here a lot because of the healthcare.
Yep.
But they can't get anywhere else.
It is, it, it's always interesting to have that outside perspective, I think, at times, right? For, for people coming in, yeah, and comparing it to, to where they come.
Yeah.
What's, what state they're coming from.
I hear that quite a bit.
Yeah, well, that's good to hear.
So.
Glad to hear that. So if you have any questions of.
Questions.
The criteria.
I don't see that email. Shoot, you just sent it, you sent it like during this?
During this.
I didn't see it. Okay, I'll try again.
So you'll, you'll have the full presentation with the numbers that I just went through. And again, the end of the presentation goes through each of those six requirements and, and what we do to meet it. So if there's any questions, um, again, it's, no, nothing has changed in those six this year from our presentation to you last year.
Great.
Yep, just the updated numbers, which is the front half of the presentation that I just went through.
Hey, Commissioner Harvey, any other questions or comments?
I, this is, appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, pass it on. I actually talked to Cheryl yesterday, Cox. I did, she didn't tell me she's the new director, whatever she was up there.
Yep, the chair of our board. Yep, she's a fabulous chair.
One thing I did do is Google your, her's the website.
Oh, yep.
It's got everybody's old on there. I don't know when it's been updated last. It pulls up Mike Levitt and some of the other, Neil Ruby's on that big board.
He is.
Is he?
He just recently, or he's just coming up on his term, but he has been involved in that um on our, he was on our M K D Board. He has stepped down of that and I believe he is still on um the, the Canyons Board.
Yeah.
Yep.
You two were not mentioned on your site and I'm, I'm just going to.
We will. So they're working on the transition of the new site, to the new website. So they are updating, so.
You guys need to be.
Hopefully soon.
Top of that.
Yeah.
Yes.
You will notice, um, uh, part of the merger was that name change and the rebranding. Uh, M K D Hospital and our uh area, it will be updating our sign, external signage towards the end of this year or into the beginning of next year.
January.
First of January, yep. So you'll be seeing our, our new logo on our building starting next year.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, I hope I don't see it.
I hope you don't.
Rather than all my people I know don't get sick and I don't.
No, don't come.
Yep.
I spent a little time up there this year, but hopefully that'll be done before you're not.
We want to be there when you need us, but we, hopefully we do not see you.
Yeah, no. I like to visit, just.
Come have lunch.
Yeah, yes. Well, thank you again for your time, as always.
Bring an official invitation. I think you guys will get, if you didn't already get email one for the cancer center.
Oh, thank you very much.
Yes.
Thanks, guys. Very, thank you.
Thank you.
Boy, that's fancy.
It's so fancy.
There we go. So October twenty-fourth.
Yes, yes. Would love to see you if you're available.
So where, is this?
So it's on the main campus.
Main campus?
Yep, we have relocated. Um, our cancer services were mostly kind of um in different areas of the hospital. And we have brought them down into the same location and have expanded them so that it's easier for patients, it's easier for physicians. Um, so hopefully this'll improve the care.
Nice.
Yeah.
Good seeing you guys.
Thank you, you as well.
Get out and get some golf in.
I, I'll work on it, you too.
I'm planning on it.
So.
You hear something, guys?
That's not our clinic part. Okay, but that is for.
Get your email.
Yeah, there's space, um, final construction, I think we're planning on them opening December eighth for the clinic. So their space should be done and then we'll move them downstairs. Yeah, it'll be so nice once they're all down there.
All right.
Yeah, the physicians are excited. Yeah.
It'll be fun. Hey, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Well, after Crockett. Who we got coming up now? Eric Crockett. You know, they do a good job. Oh, boy, here we go.
Bring the big dog with us.
Mister Ambassador. Portland, I'm surprised you're still walking, all those people with guns around you.
I know, that was scary.
Yeah.
On your closed session, would you also mind closing to discuss litigation? That would be an addition to the purchase exchange.
Any litigation?
So there'll be two things.
Oh, you can.
So, yeah, closing the session, the purchase. I got it.
You got it?
No, you're ahead of that. I'm, I'm, I'm right there with you. You know, you may have a bad foot, but you're jogging.
Oh.
All right. I would uh entertain a motion to close the session. Mister Chair?
Yes.
Sorry.
So move.
We need to state the reasons.
Then finish that. I interrupted you.
So I'll go then.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Come on, George. What we wanted to do is just make certain that you were aware that tomorrow on your normal agenda, you'll have an item that is.
that is uh it's an agreement between Weaver County and Ogden City. It's nothing more than a financial guarantee for subdivision improvements, Republican improvements. This is very typical. On the sheet of paper that I gave you, it's, I've highlighted the right-of-way. So the financial guarantee that will, that you'll consider tomorrow is for one hundred thousand four hundred dollars and sixty-five cents. That will cover, that's the estimated cost for the improvements that are within the right-of-way, which I've highlighted there. So everything you see on this plan, in between the two highlighted stripes there, that's the work, you know, stormwater pipes and water pipes and sanitary sewer, stuff like that.
Got it.
So that will be on your agenda tomorrow. I just want to make sure if you had any questions, needed any information, that I could be prepared for that tomorrow or. Brad Scott.
So have we uh given the RFP? Have we given the contract to these improvements?
It's, the RP is out now, and we probably have another two weeks before it's.
Okay, so.
We can have before it's.
This'll just be part of our, whoever we hire as a general.
Correct.
Will we do this? Okay, got it. Commissioner Harvey, you got a question?
No, but I do have a comment.
Go ahead.
I've been exce- exceptionally pleased with how Mr. Mendoza has handled this, Mr. Chair, and I've had.
Oh, yeah.
Confidence in where the county is position-wise to move forward is.
That's great.
He's done a wonderful job.
And he gets well along with Ogden City, so it's.
Kudos.
Who wouldn't?
So the, just the one thing I wanted to put out, Commissioners, is we have signed agreements with just about everybody. The biggest one that is remaining is Ogden City. And so, um I mean, I believe their intention is to contribute um.
So I spoke with Anne Marie Burke, their civil attorney. Oh, probably a month ago. They wanted to use um, there's not restricting everyone as opposed to an interlocal, which we said was fine. I asked them to provide me a draft of it so that we could look for a green, and I haven't received the draft yet.
Okay.
And then the only other ones that we are waiting for in City and Morgan County. Morgan County's approved it, I just, they wanted an updated signature page, and so I've called Garrett, but I haven't heard back yet. Those are the last three.
Okay, so Ogden City.
They've agreed.
They've agreed. Okay.
So as long as you're comfortable with that, because we said we wouldn't, we wouldn't do this unless they all agreed.
Right.
We don't have a formal ink on paper yet.
Planning Cities is forty-one for forty-two thousand.
Forty-two thousand three oh nine.
So, I don't know, I, in the grand scheme of things, I don't see that as an anchor break, but I know Rob is going, uh Rob is going to be with the city council. They agreed previously in a city council meeting.
What I thought.
If uh Mayor Beasley uh is not signing it, and so.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's Ogden City share?
Six hundred and twenty-one.
And you say, so they have agreed to that?
They've uh given me enough assurance by having their um attorney call me, means that it really wasn't issues. The biggest thing was that they wanted to be there for them.
Okay, well, that concerns me a little bit, but we'll, we'll trust the process. Yeah, but we're too, bottom line, we're too far down the road.
Well, we haven't written a check or deposited money yet. That's kind of why we're here. We want to make certain that you're comfortable with us getting this approved and proceeding and depositing the one hundred thousand dollars with Ogden City. And that one hundred thousand dollars will come back.
Right.
In increments, you know, as the improvements are installed.
Sure. Well, I feel more comfort. Will you just reach out one more time?
Yeah, sure.
I just feel a little, like a little more assurance. Not that we don't believe they'll carry through, but always nice to double check. Right?
That's what I would.
You okay with that, huh? All right, okay, Chris, thanks. Anything else?
No, that's everything.
All right, thanks. Good work, Scott.
Thanks.
Scott's been working on with with the Weaver Housing Authority as well and doing some good work there at the same time. As well as our other Scott, Scott Park.
He does the good work, I just.
Well, it couldn't happen without the no. We call dollars. Welcome. All right, we are close to one forty-five. Who we waiting on? Rick? Your side.
I think we're good.
Yeah. So I just got a text here from Bren. I guess they've got a planning commission meeting scheduled the same time as our public hearing.
Yeah, I was gonna chat with you about it.
Yeah, what do you think?
Well, it's probably not a good thing to. I'm thinking maybe we should try to change the planning commission date because it's just.
We can't change the bond at this point in time.
Right.
I guess we could. We're not going to.
Yeah. I think we might be able to, um I was gonna talk to my staff, but most of it's work session items, and then we have three regular items, but most of them are on common consent. So I think maybe if we tried to shift that meeting to the seventeenth.
Yeah.
Um that might be better. And then the next week, we'd have Ogden Valley Planning Commission, the twenty-fourth.
Okay, I don't see Bren on there, but I'll text you. Will you text Bren?
I'll text him, yeah.
Are you okay with that?
So take advantage of the five, five Tuesdays. We just talked about the schedule and that.
Well, we have a vacant up on the third Tuesday. We don't have any meetings typically. So we could just shift it to that, so we don't put them out too far. Is what I'm thinking.
If you want, if they can't, you can schedule an anchor location, and that could be in a different conference room. I have to check if it complies with the open meetings, or maybe the health department that you use, where they have their public hearings there.
We did reschedule it to room three twelve. But they're both at the same time, and so we were wanting the public to be able to go to this if they wanted to. So we didn't have them overlapping.
I like that.
That's.
Yeah, I I don't want to have anybody that would.
So I'll um, I'll shoot Junif text and I'll shoot Bren a text and just.
He said he's listening, so I think Bren, you understand that. Yeah.
Okay, all right, perfect. Thanks.
Okay, anything else?
No.
On that issue?
Nope.
All right, let's go to our one forty-five session regarding the Eden Crossing Street Regulating Plan Amendment. Charlie Ewer's here, Sean Wilkinson's with us, Red Grover, John Lewis, Shane Dunley, they're all here, okay. Who wants to lead off on this?
Um I'll have Charlie, I'm gonna have him briefly explain kind of the history and the approval process that went into Old and New Town Eden, and then he'll explain.
Great.
If what's going on here.
Yeah, actually, we just could put together the research on the history on this, so pretty fresh in my mind. Um the uh the planning commission started talking about uh new and old town in Eden. Um small area plans is what we started out as discussing. That was back in twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen.
Versus the village concept.
Yeah, now the village concept was birthed out of the small area plan.
Yeah.
Process, right?
That's what I thought.
So the general plan says do small area plans, so we did small area plans, and as we were doing that, it just became clear that uh going towards the uh village concept uh was the right thing to do, and then moving from village concept, we moved from there to form-based villages, essentially. Uh we started out with um, we actually went to the planning commission, we had a really good three-hour or so uh uh work session where we were discussing all the different uh ways that the streets could be laid out, all the different ways that the uh plan could be put together, and they saw, excuse me, they saw something pretty similar to what you see on the screen for um Newtown Eden at that time.
So what you have on the screen is that the, is this the latest proposal?
This is, no, what we have on the screen is the existing street regulation.
So this is existing, okay.
And I'll show you the latest proposal.
Okay, so that exists currently.
Already adopted.
No changes.
Yep, that's right.
Okay.
So and and the the way that it was adopted, um after the planning commission saw a version of this in twenty twenty, it was late twenty twenty that they saw it. Um we uh uh discussed with the planning commission for almost a year after that, uh the different types of changes that might come about. Um uh in adopting these kind of uh plans. At the time, we weren't calling them street regulating plans. Uh it kind of evolved over the course of that year. At the end of the the following year, twenty twenty-one, uh the planning commission uh made a recommendation for approval. In the recommendation for approval at the time, they didn't include the Newtown Eden area. It only include, included the Old Town Eden area. And that's not because we didn't discuss Newtown Eden, but it's because um as staff at that time, we were only looking at Old Town. We're gonna do Newtown at a later time.
Okay.
Between the planning commission's uh uh decision or or uh recommendation for approval to you guys uh and your guys' final decision on the ordinance, uh we had several work sessions as well, where we went back and forth on what exactly is this gonna look like? And um are we gonna take our time on Newtown, or should we go ahead and do Newtown? Uh and so Newtown is the uh map that you see in front of you, and during the deliberation, the county commission said, you know what? We've got a great framework here, let's get Newtown adopted as well, and let's not wait on that. So we went ahead and uh did Old Town, Newtown, uh and street regulating, form-based altogether in one package. So the general plan says do these small uh area plans. Instead of small area plans, we did an ordinance, which is better than a plan because you've got to abide by it if you.
Right.
Um uh and uh created the form-based zone. So that said, uh that's what you have in front of you.
When was, so when was this adopted?
Uh January twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Uh adopted by the county.
November twenty-two.
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 Planning Commission recommendation, yeah, November twenty twenty-one.
But that was just on Old Town.
That was just on Old Town and the ordinance.
Planning Commission recommendation, twenty, November twenty twenty-one. Then it came to us in twenty twenty-two.
That's right.
Okay.
So couple, couple months difference there, and during that two-month period, we were sure, working on, working on the kinks and getting ready for you guys to adopt.
Well, and I don't remember we had, so that was a public hearing when it came before the commission, correct, right? I don't remember we had any opposition to that, at that meeting, unless.
No, there wasn't. I think there was some public comment, but not a lot.
Yeah, you were, we were doing Zoom for all those meetings.
Oh, that's right.
During COVID, so people had the ability to participate from their living room.
Right.
We, I think we had pretty good turnout um on each of those meetings. I don't recall there being, it it being devoid of attendees.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so that happened all all that time, so um there's been a couple minor tweaks here and there, uh but for the most part, this is pretty much what was adopted uh early twenty twenty-two.
Okay, got it.
Okay, so now we've got an application um from uh John Shane uh to make some amendments to the shaded area that you see on the screen. So that shaded area isn't part of the plan right now. I just put it on there for uh illustration to show you where the property is.
That's the area in gray.
Yep, the gray shaded area, sorry, thank you.
Okay.
This area right here.
Um yeah.
So the applicant's looking for a particular street layout for um their development, their proposed development. Um and what they're asking for doesn't fit within the context of what you see on the maps. The dark green is three acre, one dwelling in it for three acres, the light green.
All right, can you do?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I always forget.
Yeah, well.
Dark green is.
No, no, yeah.
See that, and then dark green is also here. Now that's one dwelling in it per three acres. So no different than what's already up there. This lighter color green. Lighter color green here, here, and up in here. Um that's one dwelling unit per one acre, and the only way you get additional density uh other than what uh other than one unit per three acres, like the existing zoning is is if you transfer development rights into your project from other areas in the valley. So this is where the TDR component of the ordinance comes in.
So let's be clear, even if that proposal was adopted, there'd be no new density created until such time as we followed the general plan, which was to take density off somewhere else and transfer it here.
That's right.
Am I correct in that?
That's right, okay. So this is a little bit of a two-step process. If you guys were to adopt the changes proposed by the applicant, that's just a text amendment. That's not a rezone. You're not giving any entitlements or anything like that. They still have to go through a rezone process. They have submitted a rezone application. Or at least given us the intent for a rezone application, and we hope to have that on the planning commission agenda uh soon. Um once that rezone application has been put in place and the street regulating plan has been changed, then they'll have the right to apply under the strip, the form-based code uh following that street regulator.
And so two steps, street regulating first.
Yep.
That doesn't automatically rezone. They have to come back in for rezone for whatever they may request.
That's right. We could, we could revise this map until it's blue in the face. It doesn't apply to any property unless that property's in the form-based zone already. And there is no property in the form-based zone in this area right here.
On the screen, would you mind just also showing where you currently can do the commercial, like hotel and and drive up?
Yeah, so uh just in the Newtown Eden area, um.
On our property.
Oh, on your property here.
Yeah, where you currently could do a hotel, for instance.
Yeah, so uh the property comes uh about to here, and this purple magenta uh is vehicle-oriented commercial. It's the same thing as mixed-use commercial, but it also allows like drive-through restaurants, uh bigger parking lots, uh not big box stores, but bigger box stores, like grocery stores, stuff like that. Um and that covers uh roughly maybe a a third to a half of their their frontage. I can't say that these are survey-level accurate lines here, so then, so they could potentially put a hotel right here as it stands. And so this is what.
So a hotel could go on that.
Right now.
With no change.
If it was.
Well, yeah, with, let me say, with, obviously, uh subject to the rezone.
That's right.
Hold on. Go ahead. So I'm clear, a hotel could go any, well, we're only talking about that gray shaded area. But really, a hotel, take your arrow and show me where a hotel could go anywhere in there, whether who owned it or doesn't matter.
Yep, so I'm taking it everywhere.
Purple, right?
Purple, red, and blue.
Oh, red and blue, okay.
The blue, we call it government institutional, even though it's, this is, this is hierarchical, so.
So you're getting into, then show me again with that arrow.
Okay, let's start over here.
Where's the arrow?
Oh, do you see it?
Yeah.
Moving it. So over here on Clark Lane, coming all the way down, running all the way down Highway one sixty-two.
What about where the existing Valley Market is now?
Yep, right here.
We're, go around to get external perimeter of it, please, please.
Yep, yep, good, so.
Just kind of in the general area.
Here we are, here, coming around here.
So basically, if you drew a circle around the four-way stop, and I don't know what that. However, a half mile. Half mile or whatever that would be, three tenths, I don't know. Eventually, a hundred years from now, maybe, I want to know what the grandkids and my grandkids could see.
Yeah, this is a lot closer to a quarter mile, so um I'm gonna put the.
All right.
The mouse right here on this street, you see it? Um that roughly is about a quarter mile from the center of this intersection here. Uh so you can kind of see how that circle might be laid out, if we're looking at quarter-mile circle.
Those blue things, that's water, correct?
Um this over here, this is water, yes.
No, up there, sorry. Where are you looking, man?
Depends on what your color. So that's a canal. You're right, that is water.
Canal. Charlie, I'm really trying to help here.
I love it.
What's this?
Uh those are canals as well. So yes, you're right, all the blue things are water.
We got a lot of canals up there, Harv. Well, I just, didn't I ask you that, okay?
Not the blue streets, they're not water.
Not the blue streets, that's what I was, that's what I was concerned about.
Are those, I'm getting there. Are they pipable? Those things that are these, are they pipable?
I would.
I mean, anything's pipable, the LA River's pipable.
Right, right. I would assume so. I know that the the main canal that cuts across Weaver Basin is doing studies right now to see what they can do to pipe it.
Okay, yeah, Weaver Basin's steady right now.
Yep.
As we speak. I just wanted to know if it could be piped.
Yeah, and that's the big canal. All these other ones are little side ditches and canals.
Depends on how much water they could potentially carry.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay.
Sure, you got it.
Thank you for helping me understand.
You're welcome. Sorry I didn't understand.
You're welcome.
Um okay, so just to kind of show you the context, here's what your current plan shows, here's what the applicant is asking for. Um if we were just to give the applicant to their streets, you could see how some of the streets that are on our map go away, and they stub into the property in weird ways.
Which streets? Show me what streets go away. Do that again.
Okay, so this is what's current.
Right.
See the difference here?
So that's really just changing.
Connections change.
The connections, right?
That's right. So this one studs into the property here and it would dead end. This guy studs here and this guy studs here.
Wait, and so Charlie, this is different than what, one of the proposals we've seen of those eight varieties.
That's right.
That takes everything up through Wolf Creek and.
That's right, yeah. So what you've seen before, it, it still only includes this. Pars, sorry, this portion in here. It did show some connections into Wolf Creek.
Yeah.
Even though those roads are already proposed and approved.
Right.
The roads that they connected into. Um, and so what you guys saw before was just some variety of changes in here. The reason why.
Okay.
We were showing as many changes in here as we were is because the planning commission's primary concern, as we were talking about this. Is, boy, that just looks like the village is just creeping and getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And that's not our intention. Our intention is to not make it get so big. So what we did originally is we took this loop road off and we made some different connections here. And then um, provided some linkages over in here. So basically the whole village, it shifts over to this quadrant over here. And some of this stuff would be eliminated. It made a lot of sense to us uh, at the time because this blue loop. It goes down into the river bottoms um, and back up again. And so it may be better just to keep the village up on that bluff above the river bottom.
Well, a lot of that's all, that's where we have our shop down there and. Yeah, that's, that's more of an industrial.
Right.
Area.
Right, yep. Um, and yeah, there is manufacturing over in that, in this area right here. You got it.
That's more of an M, manufacturing slash heavy commercial.
That's right, that's right. So this is just to illustrate why we can't just take. The applicant's request and plug it into our map because it doesn't plug in there. It doesn't fit. So some of the things that we could do to help it fit, for example, I'm just gonna take one step at a time. We could change that road, just do the change. And uh, Gage, this is what we talked about the other day.
Yeah, we want that connecting.
Yep, and then we could change that road. To connect. So now you got a connection through and then we could delete the road at the bottom. Did you see that?
Yep.
Okay. And then some other things that we could do, which I, I understand maybe beyond this specific request, is provide other linkages. Going forward in the future. Um, I'm giving you a degree of um, uh, best practices. Best practices would be to really look at these linkages and implement them, but we can get them over time. We don't have to get them now. And so scooting back just a little bit. This would probably be the um, the, the default recommendation from staff because you'd get those good linkages. And the applicant still gets what they want. Um, the best practices obviously would be, well, let's link everything up uh, in that way. I'm gonna.
Well, and I don't, I don't disagree. I mean, I. Don't like the idea of non-connecting roads. You gotta have a master plan in place, but. This point in time, that's gonna come, that's gonna come when it comes.
That's right, yeah, if you see.
I don't.
So you, you got it. These, these streets that go, come and go on clicking through. Applicants will ask.
That may happen in later, five years, it may happen in thirty years, who knows?
Yeah, that's right.
Commissioner Harden.
Charlie, take that little arrow of yours and show me where the Cove Bay. That up in that, is that up in there?
So yep, here's the, the canal. Cove Bay is just above the canal.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, we do, we've got townhomes and we've got one dwelling unit for like two acre average, I think. And there's an existing road or a planned road that they'll be building that connects to this one right here. So you'll have a good connection up into the Cove Bay branch. Um, and then Cove Bay also has a, a road that'll kinda connect over this direction to the uh, potential other part of what El Coro's right now.
Does that area receive TDRs?
No, uh, not up in this area, not, not in the village context. Cove Bay did get a little bit of TDRs because they scrambled some of the ones that were in Wolf Creek already. But uh, they weren't, it wasn't a receiving area for villages, the village concept. It's kind of like TDR light.
Right.
Okay, I'm gonna show you just a couple more uh, images here. This is the bigger context. And there's one big change between what the applicant initially submitted. And uh, what the applicant is asking for now. And I wanna show you what that is. So I'm just gonna take you through the same steps of adding and subtracting. Until we get to. That.
Well, go back.
I didn't see that.
Now, it's over in Old Town.
This is old, we're looking at Old Town now.
So, and the applicant um, proposed this because we suggested they propose this. Um, Sunnyfield Farms, oops, is this property here. And when we put this together, Sunnyfield had a lot of development potential. And so it only made sense to look at that grid network and see how that could um, fill out if Sunnyfield chooses to develop. Well, Sunnyfield has acquired property up here and has rezoned to the form based zone. And they plan on transferring from here to here. And so. Going to removing these streets makes a lot more sense. And actually, this green would come up here and, and come up into the farm area here. So basically leaving the farm fairly open because they're removing their, their dwelling.
So Charlie, hold on, let's just make sure everybody's clear. So you take Sunnyfield's property there, west of their existing structure. Zone now for what, one acre lots?
Uh, three acre.
Three acre, so they could turn that, whatever it is amount into three acre lots. They're taking that density, moving it up over by Eden Acres.
That's right.
Is that correct?
Yep.
And in exchange for that.
They'll, they'll be keeping the farm open.
They've agreed to keep that open, right?
Now, they might have a couple of development rights left over that they could still use, but.
So those, those roads come out.
Yep, so, and that's, that's my suggestion. The applicant put it on their original application because we suggested they do. Again, this doesn't have a whole lot to do with.
So that actually decreases potential roads.
Right.
Yeah. All right, yeah, all right.
Another question.
We should probably make a note of that. We're hearing the opposite up there. So we're actually decreasing the potential for roads. And they can go in there and do that right now.
Yep.
As a private property owner.
Every version that the planning commission saw decreased the potential for roads.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey.
Two questions, a lot of follow-up. So show me this, so we know the Maverick is a. Quarter and a half mile around in that circle there, quarter mile, we'll say. Show me the quarter mile bullseye circle on the Old Town.
Give you a rough estimate, it's probably right about here. Ish.
Okay. So are you saying, thank you, are you saying then Sunnyfield? So are you saying that because Sunnyfield is transferring their. Development to that area to the north? Use your arrow so that you, you, you're understanding my question.
From here?
From here up to there.
Here.
Then they said, then they can do that. That's legal, there's, it's already done.
They've already got the zone to do it. Now they haven't transferred yet.
Okay, so does that mean forever, let's go back to the center of the circle and go back to the Old Town Eden Circle.
Yep, Old Town Eden Circle here.
Wherever you're gonna, okay, so in that area, keep going there. Go back up to where they're coming from, but that will never develop, well, that'll never develop into hotels there.
That's right. If you guys change this and added those commercial streets back on again, they could. Um, they'd have to buy their development rights from somewhere else and transfer them in. But if you don't make that change, they can't because we're not proposing any streets there.
Right, hold on. Now that's gonna answer another question. Some of the problem we've got right now, Charlie, is because years and years ago, back in, we're gonna call it two thousand seventeen. You drew some streets and things on a map. And you didn't draw it all the way around because back then we had no idea where development was gonna go or where sewer was gonna go or anything else like that.
That's right.
And you've kinda, you've kinda got everything going around in here and over here and. The, there. Does that mean when you draw? Again, I just asked you a question. That means hotels won't go there. You said, that's right. So you're saying to me. Would you still draw hotels or streets or things in there if you were showing it again?
If someone were to ask for it?
Who's, who's someone?
A landlord.
Well, Sunnyfield just says they're taking it off.
I'm not saying that they can't change their mind and propose streets again in the future. But that's a legislative function that you guys have control over. So you could say, no, we're not gonna add those streets back on. Thanks for removing your density when you did. If they ever choose to put them back on, or try to put them back on, I should say.
But they have to come up with density somewhere else.
But to add density, we only have the few areas where density could be added.
That's right. This Sunnyfield Farm happens to be inside of that quarter mile. If they were to come to the commission and say, I wanna add some streets.
Sunnyfield Farm, Sunnyfield Farm here or Sunnyfield Farm here?
Oh, sorry, thank you. The farm itself, here.
The farm. I don't know enough about, what's this called?
I don't know. Dog and Bone LSC is who it's owned by, yeah. Headed up by Eden Acres subdivision.
Okay. So, okay. I think I'm good for right now. Thanks for allowing me to ask those.
You're welcome. Yeah, and I wasn't aware that they've, with that proposed road, take their rights. Well, I knew they're taking their rights away up for the other, but they've agreed to keep that open space or basically would have to be farmland.
They're not taking their rights away, they're transferring their.
When we put this on the map in the first place, they came and sat down with us and said, we don't want it on the map. And we said, when you don't have development rights, we'll take it off.
Sure.
So here we are, I just wanted.
Yeah.
I wanted to follow through with that. Now, I haven't actually talked directly to them. Maybe they changed their mind and maybe I should give them a call first, but um. I just wanted to follow through.
Well, personally, you know, I supported that because I think there's this existing subdivision that's adjacent to them, to the, to the west. I think that that's a premier farmland and there's, that's kind of the. Very uh, great corridor when you come into Old Town or coming in from Newtown, Old Town or from. The top of the dam there into Old Town to keep that. Open, yeah.
Keep that separation.
Keep it separate. That's a good separation plan.
And they run a great.
I don't necessarily wanna see forty, fifty homes there.
Right.
Look, I'm the same way. I love, I love conservation easements. I love what we did and supported. Uh, the conservation easement over especially over by the. Old monastery. I think they're great. Uh, but I'm also a property rights guy. I don't wanna, I don't wanna do any takings away from what. You know, what happened was is based on recommendation from. Planning Commission and also the GM Committee. Back in two thousand sixteen and seventeen, I was here in two thousand, the beginning of two thousand seventeen, we put together a general plan. A part general plan was adopted by this Weber County Commission. Since that time, developers have come in and bought property based on that general plan. There are some who would say. We need a new general plan. And that could have merit or not. But you're talking to a guy who lives in an area who just got a new general plan. Fifty years it's been since we got a general plan, fifty.
Wow.
And now we got people that are fifteen years out and they're wanting another general plan. Good for you. But I, you know, we gotta take care of everybody in the county from where I'm coming from. So I'm just trying to weigh all these little facets. And how this all works.
You were very patient and waited fifty years for that.
Well, I did it the whole time. That was, it was, it was really hard because the people that were waiting fifty years. Had the same passionate pleas as some of the others that were here in front, you know what I mean, now, so. It's, it's, it's very, it's very hard. And it's expensive for on all the entire population of county citizens for us to just go out and throw another general plan there.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not the wisest way to run a corporation, Weber County Corporation, I will be.
I don't disagree with you.
Charlie, what else?
At an open house a couple of weeks ago and after discussions with the members who, just those who came to the open house. I still don't get a strong sense that if we were to do redo the general plan, it would be a significantly different answer.
What would be the change?
Uh, well, I think the big thing right now is a lot of folks aren't realizing that all the white areas that don't have roads on these maps.
Wait, show me on the. Arrow, Charlie.
Well.
You've got, just go.
Look at the white part.
Every, every, everywhere. Ev- everywhere that doesn't have streets in between, uh, all of that and everything outside of these colored roads. There's still a lot of development potential and we don't have a plan for where those roads are gonna go. Those roads are just, they're gonna go where the developer puts them. So.
So what you're telling me is this. And I happen to come from a family that, a lot of the roads that exist on private property that. Are now subdivisions over the last fifty, sixty years. Were put in by members of my family and you have three hundred or four hundred people living, we put the roads in. What's stopping somebody that, let's say, that has another couple, three hundred acres from them to come and put a road in and then developing that?
Nothing.
So.
I mean, they gotta follow our development regulations, but beyond that, we can't say no.
So if we're gonna stop roads, which I keep hearing, the idea would be, let's take the insanity for these individuals. From putting a road in their property and transferring that to here.
That's exactly right. Um, and we showed three.
And that's only what you do.
That's, that's exactly.
Sort of a taking.
Right.
Which.
Sort of a taking.
Which I don't think under state law we're gonna be able to do.
Well, then they could also use that new caveat that the state put in to benefit uh, if they put it into a conservation easement as well.
Yeah.
Yep.
There's some advantages to that.
Reason I bring that up is because in that meeting, I mean, I, I fully anticipate in a lot of these meetings that folks will come and say, we don't wanna see anything to, uh, to change. Well, we agree, it'd be nice to not see anything change, but there's a lot of development rights that are out there. And when you show people what could happen, whether, whether it's the Measal map, the map that shows where all the future development potential could be allocated. Or where potential streets could be, could go. When they look at that, they say, oh. Yeah, let's move all those houses if we can into these village areas.
Right.
Now, with that in mind, there are uh, people who live in the village areas who really don't wanna see that happen either.
Sure.
And we heard that in Nordic, we heard it in Wolf Creek, we're hearing it now in Eden. And so I, this really to me is a pivotal question on, do we implement the general plan or do we allow the three acres sprawl to happen? Um, and it doesn't necessarily mean that this project is right.
Yeah, my, my question is this. There's no way under state law or under private property rights, that you're gonna stop roads from going in. It's a matter of where.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah, you're not gonna tell my neighbors to the east of me. Or me, if I decide to do it, that I can't come in and put a road up where my property is now.
That's correct.
And sell off three acre lots.
That's right.
Okay.
We can't, um, it would be against.
I'm not proposing that, but I'm saying you couldn't stop me from doing it.
Right, that's right.
So, okay.
Okay, so backing up just a little bit. Let's just go back into. There we go, Newtown. So this is what is existing. This is what the applicant has essentially requested. Um, at a minimum, I would suggest you at least adopt that map.
Now this, so Charlie, just to be clear, this was different than the proposal that you took to the planning commission. A couple of months ago or whenever it was.
Yep, yeah, the proposal was, so we had four different proposals to the planning commission.
Okay.
All of them took this, the, sorry, the blue uh, and orange ring road off.
So, so it's fair to say this is a simplified. Cutback version from what they saw.
That's right.
Do you have, do you have what they saw?
Uh, I can pull it up.
Yeah, I'd like to see what. They looked at.
Good question.
Charlie, I have a question while you're looking that up. Uh, so. We're talking about adjusting the street regulating plan. If there's ever any transfer of development rights, would that require adjusting the street regulating plan or shouldn't? Shouldn't those TDRs already fit into the general plan, street regulating plan? Why are we changing it? That's my question.
Okay, uh, good question. Uh, why change? So there's a few different reasons why I change, but let me answer, I think. The basic of your question, that kinda go work my way out of that. Um, in the valley, there are so many uh, uh, development rights that are spread across all of these undeveloped areas. That I think it'd be really hard for us to fill up the existing street regulating plans of Old Town, Newtown and Nordic. And create the type of economy that's needed to keep both businesses open. There's just not enough density to do that. I don't mean to say that you need to approve more density. I don't want anyone to hear that and be afraid of the statement.
Let me interrupt you. So you're saying if, if all of the TDRs actually did transfer into the villages, they wouldn't be sustainable for what we want?
No, I think if you were to do every single one of them, I think you could make it work. But I did analysis and I, I just pretended like you um, proportionally spread out those density rights in these villages. Um, and uh, did it at fifty percent transfer. I think you're gonna be hard pressed at fifty percent. So fifty percent is about six thousand dwelling units. It could be hard pressed to keep these um, villages functional.
So let me interrupt you there. So if that's the case.
Excuse me, three thousand dwelling, it's not six thousand.
If that's the case, then why would we add additional density through the street regulating plan?
That's.
If it's not even gonna be sustainable, obviously.
So starting at, at the base and I'm working our way out to that question. We don't know where um, property owners will want to use the form base. And so it's really a pivotal question because there's nothing in our, our uh, street regulating plan or a general plan that says do or don't do this. Um, all we know from our general plan is that we should be uh, fostering a market that creates TDRs. We should be creating villages and commercial areas that have a mixture of uses and housing types. uh fostering a market that creates TDRs. We should be creating villages and commercial areas that have a mixture of uses and housing types. Uh, how do we get there? Well, we have a developer who is within that quarter mile of that village center. Saying, I would like to foster a market for TDRs. I would like to create commercial. I would like to do this. I need a modification of the street regulating plan in order to do that. So you have an opportunity. It's a low hanging hanging fruit right in front of you. That was, that's why uh staff's recommendation to the planning commission was for approval. It'd be a lot easier if they were proposing something along the street that is already changed to that. But you've got an opportunity in front of you. Um, I I would suggest taking it. One of the conversations I had at that open house was about the ease of transfer of TDRs. If your TDRs are not easy to transfer, the financial side of it does not work. Uh, and people want to do it. And if people don't do it, you're just gonna have all those houses spread out everywhere. Um, and so you're gonna fail at implementing your general plan.
Sure.
So you gotta make that super slick and super easy and financially rewarding to a developer. Um, otherwise you're not gonna get it to happen.
So let me ask another question. I understand that. I understand the opportunity versus what's been established on the street regulating plan. That makes sense to me that if we were gonna make an adjustment to that plan, we would adjust another side of that. We would, and you you understand what I'm saying? You're nodding like you do. So because if you just add more streets.
You're just spreading, you're watering it down.
Right, so if you add more streets and you take them away somewhere else. Then you still have the net same effect. I still though, because I've I've always wanted to be a truster of general plans. I I still would want to know the public's input. The way that it happened seven, six or seven years ago and maybe that's the end for now.
Okay. Um, as far as the public's input. When when you put development in the Ogden Valley in the context of here are all the rights that exist everywhere. We heard a strong movement towards putting them in the villages.
Sure.
We also, from the general plan perspective, heard uh movement and designing those villages to look nice. And laying them out in a way that's very functional um and uh uh conducive to a vibrant village, a village that will sustain the commercial operations that are in it. Um, that's the limit to what the general plan stated. How we do this, other, it says use TDRs to do it. Um, do not do it with any new density rights, so don't give any new density rights. So we know we have those principles. Beyond that, the public didn't say it should be exactly like this and shaped like this and this side. The general plan just didn't go into that level of detail.
Okay, I understand that. So if we're if we're talking about making a change, then I would I would want the public's input. I do agree with you that if if it's if it's not feasible, then we're just gonna see the spread of of development across the whole valley and nobody wants that.
Yeah.
So if we don't, if we don't balance that somehow, when when we have an opportunity to bring TDRs there. If we don't balance that by taking them away or taking away the streets someplace else, then I it doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah.
I agree. I mean, you gotta take order a copy set. You have to take streets from over here. And.
I I feel like you have to.
Yeah, well.
And and if.
It's only way to solve it.
We're if you're proposing this, if developers proposing this, we need to propose this to the public. With our solution, which is we're taking away these roads, these streets, this density, whatever around this village. In exchange.
Yep.
That I feel like that has to be presented in public.
That was. So I'll show you what was presented to the public. Um, I've got, so one version is on the screen right now. Uh, so. Just see, let's see if I can get it a little bigger. So, and we didn't give a a preferred, I don't think we gave a preferred recommendation. I think we said, here's some ways to do it. So in each of the three that I'm gonna show you, um, the applicant gets the street layout that they're asking for. So what this version does is it takes that commercial institutional and governmental road that that loops down here.
Yeah, but is there already existing development on that?
No, there's not even a street there yet.
Okay.
So the dash lines means uh future proposed streets. Uh, solid lines means existing. And we replaced it with just some some uh one acre and three acre connections, so very low density in these areas. Um, we also suggested we remove that one as well. And I think most of these versions, you'll see that. Um, and then just provide some good connections in between. Uh, we're looking at vehicle or excuse me. Magenta is vehicle oriented. The red is pedestrian oriented. So we got kind of pedestrian on that side, pedestrian on this side. And then pedestrian pretty much everywhere in in Old Town. So that's one of the versions they saw.
So just to clarify, the one on the on the south, that elimination was also adjusted up into the.
Yep, so that that's gone and that one is gone on this.
In exchange for the.
For addition of this and a couple of connections. Yep, so we, I tried to, I don't, I couldn't give you linear distances, but I tried to uh proportionally offset them. Um, here's another version, alright? Yeah, you're gonna say, what's the difference? Just a little bit of the difference. Um, this provides better connections. It plans a a park down in this area where there's some large parcels. Now, we didn't talk to the landowners of the park, and so I don't want to scare anyone, but um, just an idea, uh, if if a park like these were to go in, we would have to have either transferable density or someone would have to buy it from the landlord and so no one's taking any anything. Um, and then just having instead of that commercial loop, having just residential loop around it. This note here, so this version puts more um small lot residential on the periphery of this village. Because this village just, it it's not designed with it right now. And I think it'd be a good idea to have some small lot residential on the periphery of it. Whereas this one has quite a bit of, it's got commercial and it's got a little a little bit of multifam and then small lot and then large lot and then very large lot. Um, what is in existence now just doesn't have that here. So this version plays that out, keeps all the streets the same as the applicant is asking for, a little bit of residential over in here. Uh, this is small lot residential, not the multifam that uh the uh current version shows. So it's option C that they saw and then option A. This one is just a little bit more simplified. Let me make sure that's the right one. Oh, okay, you already saw option A, I think. Okay, option A is just a little bit different than B. Um, focusing future potential government operations over in this area here. Keeping the vehicle oriented commercial in the center, looking at uh the uh walkable village areas here. This keeps a lot of what is currently in the uh existing plan in place as far as Valley Junction Drive goes and Highway one sixty two. But that loop that came around here and connected through, that's gone. You're putting uh this is already shown as um multifam. This is over in that industrial area. Right now, it's already showing as multifam on your existing plan, but then instead of going into that government institutional here, it just goes to uh median lot residential and large lot residential. So that's the big change that you see there. Over here where the applicant's property is, it stays the same. And then we've got small lot residential connections over here. Now, this just goes to show, there's a bunch of different ways to scramble this to come to the same outcome that the applicant is asking for. And the best outcome for the public. Um, I think what the applicant is here to ask for is to simplify all of this to just looking at their property. Um, which we've provided an avenue to do that with with the one of the versions that we've recommended that we just looked at. Or you can look at the entire village and say, how is this all gonna connect and?
I think you have to look at the entire village. Because if you don't, then you have that strip in between in between our current street regulating plan and their property, that's still three acre density. I I feel like we have to.
I think it's best practice to do that, but.
So you think you should include everything?
Well, it doesn't make any sense not to. You're gonna come back to it anyway.
I don't, I don't necessarily disagree.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have commercial and density here and then this little sliver of three acre density and you have to. I if we're gonna shift it to the northeast, then we should shift it.
You you're gonna have the same question.
That's essentially what you're doing.
Yep, that's right. Yeah, if we don't make the connections and make the changes, it's good.
You're exactly right. The reason for that is what currently exists there to the southwest, which is one of which we talked about.
Right, right.
So.
I I was just gonna point out that, you know, Charlie made a good attempt to try to show the balance of if you do it here, you don't necessarily have to do it over here now. But, you know, it got confusing. There were three or four different versions and and frankly, I think it would have been stronger if we had just said, here's exactly what we're asking for and it's you know, let's do the density over here because no one's gonna build condos at the car wash now. That that day is gone. So let's take it off of there instead of doing it there, let's do it over here. But the way it currently is is shown, it won't happen. So we have a broken general plan in that sense. No one's gonna build a a walkable street and cute condos over by the state sheds. Or the industrial area, but that should be redrawn, but you know, it's not really up. It's not really us who should be asking for that to be redrawn. We should just be asking for our piece.
Sure.
And Charlie can present, you know, let's let's fix this other stuff. And and I would put it to you, Charlie, that if you had known where the sewer was going, would you have done anything differently?
Absolutely. Yeah, if we knew where the sewer was going, we would make sure that most of the commercial and density, you know, that was centralized around that sewer.
Yeah, so maybe we take that that look and say, what what should it look like?
I think we got, I mean, yeah, we can have that discussion, but obviously I think John's right.
And here's the alignment, by the way, sewer water. And the general plan says principle one point five for cross street development around the infrastructure. This is the infrastructure that's going in. It's going to pick up commercial, it's gonna pump sewer up to Wolf Creek. I would try the partnership we're all contributing to.
But maybe now's the time to take a bunch of stuff off and you kind of.
And I know, and Commissioner Harvey, you know, I know that you think the general plan is is fairly new and it is, but I I mean, if we have infrastructure information that that we didn't have at that time. We need to make the adjustments. I just feel really strongly about that. I feel like the community and the landowners and the developers and everyone should know what we expect. So we're not coming back to the table with each new development or each new proposal. That's just unfair to everybody.
Understand that a new master general plan is what I was referring to. I'm not opposed to making adjustments like you just, and I think that's.
If this information about infrastructure was not available, then it needs to be included.
Agreed, I and I can agree with that as well. I think we're talking two separate things.
An amendment versus a.
Harvey's talked about the general plan, which talks about moving density into village areas across the taking off Valley Ford. What you're talking about is adjusting what Charlie put together two or three years ago with the idea that we had no idea where sewers are gonna go.
Yep.
We all know that, I've said this a hundred times, good infrastructure makes good development. And Charlie and we, and I I think the planning commission would agree, you're not gonna have condos built next to the car wash or the storage shed. It makes no sense.
And I really do feel like, like you said, Charlie, if we don't take advantage of developments that want to actually transfer development rights, if 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 we can't make that happen, it won't happen. And then the whole valley will be covered with three acre lots. And and I just really don't feel like anybody wants that.
No.
So we, whatever we need to do to help this work, we should. But it needs to be very open to the public for their input and 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 their additional understanding, I guess. I mean, it's, this predates me, so I'm trying to try and understand and and ask my questions. But I just feel like there needs to be a process where they can understand what we're thinking. Hey, we need to be able to tell the public. Now we have the structure in place and it's so important to to plan these these villages around the infrastructure and this is why we're going down this road.
Yeah, so that is one of the things that we did do. Um, well, we we did it through the planning commission process. It was a public hearing. Um, I didn't get a great sense that um members of the public uh had a full understanding of what the valley might look like if we're not planning villages this way.
So important.
Right, and so that's one of the reasons I'm really glad we went back to the public uh in the open house a couple of Tuesdays ago. To show here, here's a potential build out, a very realistic build out under your existing zoning. You can have that, or you can have some scaled back version because we're moving all a lot of that into these villages.
And how was that received?
I felt like it was well received. Um, I didn't hear anyone in the meeting who said, I really hate that. In fact, I heard people say, gosh, I hate development.
Yeah.
But nobody said I hate this idea. In fact, I kind of, we had a a group that gathered around me and said, how are we gonna make this happen? Not, we really hate this idea. In fact, I mentioned to those folks who were, but there's probably a good five to ten people in a in a circle around me asking the question. I said, call the commissioners. Uh, one of the things that they could do right now is change all the CB two property to form base. Uh, that's a benefit to the public because you're saying this is where your density transfers are gonna go. It's a benefit to the landowner because it opens up a few more land uses by adding residential into those commercial areas. Um, overall, it's a benefit to the general plan. Now, I don't know if you guys would be interested in in picking that battle now. It's a lot harder when you're a landowner, having the government tell you what your zone is as opposed to you going and asking the government for something. Uh, a zone to your liking, but form bases by far, I think, uh the tool that most landowners will choose to go with in the future. Uh, just because it it opens up a lot more opportunity for them. Uh, a lot, there's a lot more economic output in that.
So back to one more question?
Sure.
Maybe. No, but I know we're over time. I'm sorry. Back to the original um agenda item. How were the plans received by the planning commission and do they have a recommendation?
They do. Yeah, so the planning commission's recommendation was for denial. Um, and they saw all three of those versions plus.
Not, they they didn't deny it. They denied the.
Yeah, right. So they.
Sure, which one they denied.
Go back to these, the three versions that we saw.
That's what they denied.
So they said no on um all three of these versions. Um, and they they basically said, we wanna keep the street regulating plan the way that it is, which is.
That.
And that was a five to two vote?
Five to two, mm-hmm, yeah.
That's all the planning commissioners?
Yep.
Seven.
Mm-hmm, seven. Uh, the two who voted against, they specified afterwards that they would have rather tabled it and had more discussion. Uh, the five who voted in favor of the denial, recommending denial, um, had a variety of reasons why, but I think one of the primary reasons was the the public just isn't ready for it. And we did have folks who were in the meeting who really didn't want to see this happen.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm not gonna go all day.
This could go on for a while, but you know, here's here's the issue. Is that we now have a proposal. Couple of proposals, one I think that probably we're leaning towards, which was expansion of the sewer up there. Um, is sewer a good idea for the valley or a bad idea? I think that most people would agree if you can, for whatever reason. That uh we can help the sewer become more of a reality up there. That's better. Helps the helps water quality, helps a lot of things. It helps Miranda. I think that her group would agree that that's a good thing for the valley, uh, for a lot of reasons. And if we're gonna have sewer there, that's your infrastructure. That's and and you're right, I mean, when this whole thing was drawn, we didn't have a clear picture where we're headed with this sewer. And if uh if we're gonna make, if this county's gonna make a major investment of arfa dollars into sewer, we need to be supporting that decision by that's where that's where infrastructure has to go. Or, you know, all we're gonna do is recreate the problem somewhere out to the south, you know, the west. I just, you know, I think we have to keep that in mind.
Yeah, I was also gonna say, I'm all for public comment and and more input. That's always good.
Right.
But we're at the point now, we've had so much of this, where we're getting our families threatened and our cars vandalized. So just keep that in mind as we move through this.
Well, and you know, it really comes down to the people hate growth. They wanna stop growth.
Sure.
Which is understandable. I wanted to stop it twenty years ago, but that didn't help me at all. Um, the reality is we're not gonna stop it. Well, how do we manage that growth? How do we stop that growth from spreading all across the valley and put it in the areas like that? Uh, how do, you know, do we wanna have a place for hopefully our kids and grandkids, maybe to have a smaller place to live? Not have to buy a three acre, which they can't afford anyway. So there's a lot of, you know, of that discussion has to go into it. But no. Well, we're gonna have to have that discussion.
One of the reasons why my recommendation for approval is what it is is because you don't have a lot of land in this particular quarter mile area. That is a large enough contiguous acreage owned by one individual to foster the economy needed to create that sewer. Well, over here in this area town, it's just a lot of fragmented parcels. Owned by a bunch of different people who kept enough land that they could potentially put a septic system on it for their business. But not enough to actually create an economy scale where they can all go in together uh on it and and actually extend sewer. But you put a lift station over here, all of a sudden, the economy scale is is much greater. Uh, and these guys could potentially pull their dollars and pipe to the to a lift station. And so it does enable this area to also become that commercial area that it was originally designed to be as well.
Yeah.
I'll just say one more thing is, more importantly, this is our last, I think, chance to really do a beautiful, cute little village downtown with a little walkable street and trails and festivals and have it in a way where it could be pulled off and not ruin the transportation corridor through the middle, where we've got a chance to make something really cute for that town. And this is our our shot at it.
Yeah, and and part of, part of the forum base we didn't bring up was architectural control.
That's right.
So everything that goes through basically the arch, the forum base has to have architectural approval from the planning commission. So that we know what this thing's gonna look like ten, fifteen, twenty years from now.
Right, and that's where you get lots of potential put and you have
Yeah.
open houses and you go, okay, what do we want? Now that we know what we can do, what do you want?
Right.
And we always do that.
Yeah.
On every one of our projects.
You do.
Sorry for going over time, commissioners.
Um. Well, it was a good discussion.
We were thinking maybe this could be uh on one of your upcoming agendas, to infer direction from you guys on what version you prefer and which agenda you'd like to see it on.
All right, we'll have that discussion and get back to you. How's that? We'll have that discussion. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate your time. We'll have that discussion. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, commissioners. Appreciate your time. Thanks for being with us. Okay, sorry for the delay, folks. Rick, you've got Tammy out there, I think.
You want I gotta have a a motion to conter for three, okay?
Let's do five.
Okay, fine.
Second.
Who's Joan?
Commissioner Harvey, we've got seats over here. Help yourself. He'll be coming back shortly.
For you, buddy.
We're here to discuss the um, Mountain View Estates. Where's Tammy?
Charlie's gonna.
Charlie's doing it. Okay, Charlie.
Hi.
Regard regard requirement regarding the bridge to the east. So Tammy's not here. Charlie, Rick. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm just gonna draw a couple of things up on the board so you guys can see it. Um, the green circle you see in the middle, it's hard here. We're gonna plan it for him. Um, that's roughly where the property is that the African is uh, talking about. You guys have had this discussion. Uh, recently, uh, the outcome of that uh, work session, we were gonna put together a uh, development agreement. Um, as we started working on it, it became clear that um, my understanding of. The commission's decision in that meeting was a little different than John's understanding. So we just wanted to re-ask the question. And then hopefully get it on the agenda a week from tomorrow. If if we can, we'll get a development agreement put together and get it in front of you.
Okay.
So question is.
What's the question?
Question is essentially, uh, here we are, let's see. Um. Right here in this location, that is where their um. Railroad crossing is uh, for this uh, potential subdivision that's out here. Uh, subdivision with about, was it thirty lots?
Twenty one.
Twenty one lots or so uh, for phase one. Uh, so their egress, uh, if you recall, originally was planned to go west. Um, but they came in and said, you know, it it doesn't make sense for us to spell spend those hundreds of thousands of dollars for our secondary emergency egress to go west. When our real goal is to get over the river right here at sixteen hundred. And so what they asked, uh, what they're asking for is um. To be able to use the money to uh, that they would otherwise use going west to escrow for a bridge uh, here. Um, and. Here's where the, I think the disconnect in our understanding was, uh, my understanding was that. They would also be required to put a secondary egress uh, in to get over the railroad for the. Intermediary uh, intermediary.
That's what I thought.
And honestly, that's making us do double what we were required to do. We thought instead of we can build the road going east, what we proposed. Or we can escrow money for the bridge. Instead of spending the money on a road. Because we're already building road anyways, is the, but if not, we're we're doing double what we were required to do at the beginning of. For doing the road and. And bridge. So we were saying, yeah, let's just grab the cost of the bridge or the cost of the road. And get to the county and escrow and it can go towards and then go towards the bridge. So we're not getting out of anything. We still have to spend the money, but it's going towards something that's gonna be useful and not towards something that will most likely never. You know, most likely never get used.
And so what we had talked about for. The way we we kind of made that decision. Was. Just for these lots. Net, they don't get another lot after this. Twenty one lots, yeah. And that's it. So this this twenty one only. Then every lot after that, we've got to put the road in, we've got to put everything else in. And, you know, I'm building across the street, all the all the other lots. And obviously, we're gonna put the road in as well. But the agreement was this money was to go towards the bridge because we're gonna start the bridge at the same time. We're putting the development agreement, we're. Literally a week away from our. Thick, thick, beautiful development agreement with Charlie. Uh, for the property across the street and uh. Um, that money. That they're gonna put in will go towards the bridge. That's what we had talked about was. If we think it would be better, and again. We as in. We you, we were talking about better use for the money was. To put it towards the bridge to start all the engineering, get it going. And then as we put in. Our development agreement, we have to pay to finish the engineering and start the bridge. That's what we had kind of discussed as, and again, I don't wanna. Put anything.
So when does the bridge get started? What triggers the bridge going and? We have funds in place to.
So we. We are. Putting a P I D together right now.
Okay.
We've already started working on that, working with Black Pine, doing our P I D, putting it together, and the P I D, the bridge will be in the P I D. And so their money will go in and will start. The engineering of the bridge, we'll start working towards that. And this is all in a development agreement for our side as to, you know, what. What the next steps because. They're not gonna be able to put the bridge in, but we are. And so. Um, with the P I D, it'll put the bridge in, but we will start working on everything. John's already worked, helped us get the in, we got two bids.
Yes, I I was gonna add, we have a bid for two hundred fifty eight thousand to build the road out west, right? A road to nowhere. And and the.
From where to where?
West.
But let's just, let's just have Charlie's really good with his little back. So let's just have his little white mouse and show us from where to where.
Um, from here to the crossing by ponds.
So, so the thought is, build a road to nowhere or use it for a bridge. And so that we would write a check for two hundred fifty eight thousand dollars.
That's what that road's gonna cost you?
Yeah.
To go west?
Yeah, we have two bids on it.
Okay.
Now we've got two bids for the bridge. As well. You know, they've gotten, so that's what we're saying. We can spend that money, which in the port and all that's planning to go right to that exact spot right there. So it's just a road that's gonna get torn out. When they do all their planning anyways. It's just a lot of money spent for no reason. Or we say, instead of spending that money there, let's just give it to the county to escrow. It can be put towards the bridge or whatever you guys deem fit, you know. You guys, but it's it's a useful, it's money that's gonna be used for a good purpose. This is, the minute the port gets their plans, they it doesn't go along with that road, which they're gonna do what they're gonna do. They're just gonna tear it right into it, tear it right out. So it's just, it's just good money after bad. And we're not, we're not complaining about the money, we're complaining about the poor use of the money. And saying we'd rather just put it into escrow. Where it's gonna go towards something good.
So does our east access work? Um, come across, you where that red line, is that going in?
No. So there's a road, there's there's a, there's a farm road.
Yeah.
There now, yes, there's a farm road.
So is that what you plan on using?
If for emergency, yes.
For emergency?
Yeah. We can, we can, we can scrape it and beautify it, you know, do a little bit uh, enhance it. And, you know, whatever we, whatever we put into, we take that out of the two fifty eight and enhance it a little bit. But uh, it's good enough to get. I mean, an emergency, if an emergency happened today. Right? We could actually get anybody out either. I can, we can go in a direction and get people out. If if the train wrecked today, those thirty souls that are there now, we could get out right now. So uh.
To the east. You're talking to the west.
Actually, per me personally, I would take them west. Um.
How do you negotiate around the state's?
Yeah.
Gate there to Ogden Bay.
We go right here. So this actually goes, um. It's on eighteen would be what would be future eighteen header. We go along the fence line right about right here and the fence line goes right, you can kind of see it a little bit where that fence goes over there. Right around this ground right now. And then it comes up here and then there's a little bridge that crosses right there and we go through Noddy's because there was a right of way. With Litchfield through Noddy's. So we come up right here, which is right by, there's a gate right there, right after the railroad. So you go through that gate right there and that gets you across the road.
Okay.
I personally think that's the. Again, that was something happened today. That's the, I get a semi through there and I held my cows in and out. And so it's a good enough road to get a semi all the way from seventy five all the way to the railroad because I can go either direction. Um, is it, is it a nice, beautiful, luxurious road? No, it's dummy, right? Like it's, but it's a. It it gets a semi across, so I can get a, it would get a fired engine across as well. Like it's. It'd be fine that way. Now, if we want to run a blade across it just to make it a little smoother, if that's what you want to do, I'm happy to run a blade across there. Um.
I'll just add, where we ran into, uh, I guess miscommunication is they were talking about an engineered road going east. In addition to the bridge and and we look at it and say, well, we'll just go west then. We'll just go west. We can't spend. More money to engineer a road going east, just a a temporary road. That the plan was either do the money toward the bridge or.
Which one might be spent in a positive way. Well, it might be a useful thing because all that material. All that time that we're gonna put in to put that road in is is gonna get torn up. Within, I don't know how fast it's gonna go in, but it's gonna get torn up eventually. So it's just. And hey, that's that's a lot of money that could go towards a really. How bad we want the bridge in. The bridge is key to everything out there, right? What we're talking about. And so the bridge is like. High priority. And so we just want to say, well, let's let's contribute that money towards. And the and the money's to the county. So if anything happens or. You know, I guess they open the bridge in and there's money there that we can go in and and. Do the road or whatever afterwards because the money's there, right? But the, um, for us to do both. Doesn't make sense. If you just do that road, it's just a lot of money spent for no reason. We have the, we got permission from Litchfield to do it, but they want, I understand that. It can be moved. At any point in time with their plans, right? With their inland port plans. So it's just, it's just trying to be smart with the money that we're spending.
Harvey, you got a question?
Couple of them. Charlie? Let's go back and blow that up a little more.
Uh, which side?
Let's go where the bridge is gonna go. Not too much. I want to keep that. Orange or whatever color line that is. Is that where the bridge is gonna go?
Mm hmm, roughly.
Who owns those, who owns the pieces of property?
These two.
Well, I just, it doesn't, you can pick anywhere on that map.
Martinis and the Heslops.
On the east side?
Martini to the north. Heslop to the south. And then on the west side of the river, you've got Meacham on the north side. And you've got Weaver.
Which, we have contracts on those pieces.
The county owns a sixteen foot wide right of way, um, at least to here. I think it actually goes to the river, but it it goes to at least right here.
Keep going east now, please.
You can see the road, there's the dirt road.
Got it, okay. Keep going east. Hey, who are those pieces up in there? There's a road right there. I recognized a couple of those roads there. What are what are those roads there?
You got a heslop to the north. Oh, sorry, this is sixteen hundred. It's currently a dirt road right there. Um, heslop to the north and McFarland to the south.
And then Weaver County owns the. There's a section that Weaver County owns right in the middle where the road is.
Yeah, yeah.
So where we wanted the road to go? I thought it was gonna be closer to like eighteen hundred south.
Um, so the general plan shows two alternatives. One is going up to sixteen.
There was a little road, zigzag.
Yep, so the zigzag was going from eighteen to sixteen and back down to eighteen. Mostly because there's this big bend in the river. And that just tends to eat away the bank. Uh, over time, it'll continue to eat that bank away. And so for the sake of putting a bridge in a help more healthy location, using the sixteen hundred alignment.
Where's the uh? You said two bids. Could we talk about those bids now? Would that be, where's Chris Grant at?
Liam's here.
Yeah, oh, Chris is here.
Speak of the devil, he knows exactly what he can be.
Approximately, if you could ballpark, so you're not tied into anything, how much does it cost to put in a bridge?
About two point eight. We're estimating.
Three million bucks.
Three million bucks.
Three million. So you're you're putting in ten percent maybe. Why can't you just get the rest of the money and do it?
That's what we're working on right now. And that's what we've agreed on our, because we own, I have right now seven. Hundred and sixty acres that I own, plus the rest of the ground we have tied up in our contract. We're putting everything together and then we will build the bridge before we come to even try to.
You you uh, let's go back to. Heslop. Who was on the other side of the street?
Martinis.
Mark Martin.
Do you have any? We have any? What if they don't want to sell?
They prefer eight, just to be full disclosure, they actually prefer eighteen hundred. Either out.
Who's they?
The east side, I said east side of the owners, McFarlands, um, DeGiorgio. Um, and those guys, they like the eighteen hundred alignment better and that steel. Eighteen hundred is one of the two possibilities. That'll all be kind of weighed out. With uh, between road landowners and uh, but the the side, just in full disclosure. They do like the eighteen hundred alignment better.
My question is, Mr. Chair, is if they had the three million bucks today. And you started, and you started building the bridge. You can't start building the bridge because you don't own the property to the other side where the bridge is gonna fall yet. Right?
Correct.
And so. That then isn't this, that's not, isn't that a problem? Should, when you need to own that property, where the bridge is gonna go?
Yep.
I took to to me. I just was wondering about that.
Um. And I have. We have started some talks with that on, you know, working the other piece of the ground on the other side. We've been working this for years and years and years, and I've already got like fif- eighteen million tied up. So we just want to get a development agreement in place. Because. We've been here. And then now we're over here. Then we've been here and. So we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars moving the target. I want to get the target locked in with the development agreement so we know exactly what we're doing. And when we first pitched this to you guys. It, I was told. Pat. If you put the bridge in. We'll take care of the east side.
Who said that?
Who said that?
You did.
I did.
You said, Pat, if you put a bridge in, we'll take care of the east side. I said, okay.
I didn't take care of that, Harvey.
I don't know, but I don't remember. What did I mean by that? Tell me the context.
We were talking about. Going on to the east side and getting the road put. So Weaver County owns up to the. They've got. With sixteen feet or whatever it is wide. And we were talking about that's why sixteen hundred is a much better location than eighteen because Weaver County doesn't have any type of road on eighteen hundred. So sixteen hundred owns up, Weaver County owns up to the river. And so we were, they haven't, it's either easement or ownership. I can't. Tell.
I know it's it's fee to at least this line here. For some reason, the G I S parcels don't show all the way to the river. And so if it is to the river, uh, the the rest of it wouldn't be in fee.
Well, you know. Thanks, Pat, but I don't remember that. I'm sorry, I just don't remember. I don't. I remember talking about this before, but I don't remember. We'll take care of the east side. I don't know that we have the ability to take.
No, and I I've had a meeting with east side owners. And they're not against the road. They they want, there's one talking about the alignment, how that goes over and when it starts to curve over to eighteen hundred. So it's not a matter of. No, we're not gonna do it is, they wanna, they wanna have some say of how that, that's what they like eighteen. And John DeGiorgio is definitely likes eighteen better. It goes through his place as well. And Kenny McFarland's kind of the ringleader. On the east side landowners and on pushing eighteen. Um, there's now another player. Uh, that bought some down down here that's working with Flagship and they've kind of got a mock eighteen hundred. Um, plan right now. So that will be presented to you guys probably in the next couple of weeks, the eighteen hundred.
So what I remember from our last conversation here, so if I may, Mr.
Go ahead. Keep in mind we're running out of time now.
Okay, then I will hurry. I remember some kind of business from Bronco.
Yeah.
Bridge was gonna go like that. Right like this. But I I don't know that I could ever speak for landowners on that other side. I haven't talked to Johnny DeGiorgio or Heslop or.
Kenny.
Martini. I haven't talked to those guys and so.
Well, Kenny McFarland's the. He's kind of like the ringleader of getting everyone on the same page.
I respect that. I just don't know. I, sorry, I haven't spoke with them, so. I I'm gonna suck that back. If I said that, I it was an error of some understanding how that was going. Uh, we don't build, county doesn't build roads, the developers build the roads. And Rick, we helped them facilitate that, but I don't know, uh. I might have had Tabasco on my cereal that morning, but I'm sorry, but I don't remember that. I don't remember that at all.
I think they just promised they were gonna name the road after you. So hey, so here's the deal. Let's give, we gotta get back on, how many homes do we have in there right now?
Well, twenty one, twenty one lots is the, is phase one.
Alright, so we got twenty one posts. No homes exist in there right now.
No.
Thirty, thirty homes existing in the south.
As Commissioner Harvey has well, very well pointed out. We don't have a bridge now.
Correct.
We may in the future, we may not. I'm not gonna speculate on. You know, that's a major. Big year. So my con- my concern is. When we've got to have a alternative. Access out of there for emergency. Now, if it goes west, you guys, you guys will put in the two fifty eight. You say you can handle it going east by grading the road. I would leave it up to our engineer. You say you can handle it going east by grading the road, I would leave it up to our engineer to look at that, to see what would be. What we consider to be acceptable, you know, if you're gonna take a skid loader out there and put a couple loads of gravel on the potholes, that may not work. Alright, we've gotta have it so that road could be used by up to twenty-one people, no more, is that right? Is that what you're telling me?
Yep.
No, you're not asking for any additional lots. So, uh, base, so that road's gotta go east until that bridge is built.
Or go west, I guess.
Right, or go west.
Go west.
West is more ready, right? Like, except bring the semi across it already, the crossing is way better cross, that east crossing is, is no good. All we're saying is, that's a lot of money spent, so we're not, we're not trying to get out of spending the money, we're not trying to get out of doing the road.
Okay.
We're saying, we gotta escrow the money, so it goes towards a good use. Now, let's say in a couple of years, the bridge looks like it's not going in, that money's still there, to build the road.
Right. So what we're talking about is timing, when we pull that out of the, if, if we would allow you a. Time limit that says, look, that access will either go west, you'll, you'll come up with a, I'm gonna call it a temporary access to the east. And whatever period of time we can agree on, that, that that then comes out of escrow and you put the road into the west. Because, because it works like, you know, at that point in time, you don't have martinis, you don't have his lips, you don't have agreement for that bridge. Pat's, you know, bankrupt or whatever, a lot of reasons that thing could go out, okay?
Which is why the escrow's important.
Right.
Right, yeah.
So I think what we're talking about then, if, if we've got any, I mean, we make them go to the west? Or, I'm not opposed to giving them a time factor that says if you could work that out over the next twelve months, twenty-four. Basically before those, I think.
Tie it to, tie it to occupancy.
Before those twenty-one homes.
Twenty-one months from occupancy, then it goes and we have to go.
One of those homes, one of those homes be complete.
Well, we.
We hope by next year.
We keep getting pushed, this, this is part of the problem, I do probably remember more like, we just met with you guys separately. At that meeting, everyone agreed, said, well, we'd be okay if it's a temporary road, if it's just improved enough, so like what John's talking about. Then it just kept changing and changing, so, four millions of dollars and.
So let's say twenty-four months, the twenty-four months of things are good, and twenty-four months of nothing, if the, the, the bridges are imminent in twenty-four months. Which I think it will be by then, knowing.
Well, let's have Pat speak to that, how do you feel about that?
Or we tie it to C O for like twenty-one, I think that's a more.
I'm not, I, I won't do that, I'm just telling you right now, I don't tie, based on what I've been through. I won't tie anything to a C O anymore because of where we were.
You might mean you wouldn't grant C O.
No, just, we don't go down that road, we don't do that anymore.
Well, I also propose that twenty-four months, we, we put the money in escrow, so the money's there, not going anywhere. Um, and then, that, in twenty-four months, if the bridge isn't looking like it's imminent, then we can, we'll put the road west. It's a lot easier, it's a, it's a, it's a more road-ready, um, route. Now, and, and the port might have their own thing, so by then, we might see some things with the inland port, and, uh, they might have some.
That's, that's a possibility.
And so, so we're gonna see a lot of things happen, so we might be okay, but that money's there, so that the county can tell us, hey, we're gonna put this money this way. Or you guys have that discretion.
Yeah, I think that's a really key point to that, is, we would put the money in, when we talk about escrow, I think if escrow is something that can come back to me. By meeting an objective.
Sure.
What we're saying is, this money is for the county to use however you want to. But if, if, let's say in twenty-four months, if there's not a plan, and you want us to build the road out west, well, then we can use that to build that. But if not, this is money for the county just to get to the path that held over the bridge.
Yeah, well, it'd be dedicated toward the bridge, well.
Well, whatever gets that access, right, whatever.
Sean, isn't this a road that would be used by all counties, so it could be a?
I don't know that this shows up on.
It's an emergency egress only.
Right, i- it's not going to show up on the regional transportation plan right now, so we'd have to add that and then potentially get funding. Again, that funding cycle is four or five years in the future, so, not the greatest option right now.
Yeah, this is an emergency egress, the only way it even gets used is the fact that if a train wrecks. And blocks seventy-five hundred, and there's no way to get out, right, then we have to get emergency, it's emergency egress with crash gates, and it's not a public road. And again, that's what was so frustrating is, is, is just, at least the money can spend on something that will. A, most likely not get used, the chance of the train wrecking is not great, you know, precedent in so far, and B, getting torn up within a few years. With whatever development, you know, that's field, I know they're pushing it really hard.
Yeah, well, I don't disagree, the two hundred fifty-eight, make, is probably an unwide for the future.
Yeah.
They'd import.
But in escrow, but let's say nothing happens and things slow down, well, it's there, let's go put it in.
So let's, we're just, in my opinion, we're just talking about time.
Yeah.
How much time do I give them? Twenty-four, twelve?
That doesn't matter to me.
Barb?
I don't. I, I just find out twelve months is a lot of time these days, you know, things move pretty fast. I'd say twenty-four to thirty-six would be more reasonable, if possible.
I think twenty-four is, um, I think within two years, we should have a good idea.
Well, and what, how do you feel about that, Pat?
I feel really good, but I think there should be some language in with it, that it gets tied in going east once, cause we're, we're ready. To present the development agreement, and we're gonna continue to move forward, and we'll figure out everything on the.
You, you bring us a solid proposal, RF, you know, R P for that bridge, and this fits into the.
We just release it.
Correct. Which, yeah, we just produce it, yeah, at, once we have that, but I wanna, we wanna make sure that money's going to the bridge.
Completely agree, you're in for access.
Yeah, access in general, yeah.
I, I might have missed this, cause I was sauntering for five, but.
Rick, what was the, what was the opinion of, if the planning commission weighed in on this?
So the planning commission was really confused.
Sorry, sorry. They were just looking at the access west. So, so, Alex, so what was their final decision? They approved the access west, the bridge wasn't part of the discussion at the time. Okay, so they, they gave a recommendation to approve if the access west was gone.
Correct. That, that was the original.
That was the original.
They, they came back for prelim and final approval recently, and, um, the planning, that was, that was one of the days that you were gone. The planning commission said, alright, go ahead and go east, um, with your egress.
No, they actually wanted us to go both ways.
One of, one of them.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
But I think the final decision was, go ahead and go east with your emergency egress.
Where, where I got is a challenge, I think, and there was discussion later on about, oh, it's senior here, and it's all this, and it's like. We could be into that two hundred thousand dollars, plus the bridge, well, why not just go west and do a road to nowhere in that?
Alright, so here's what we're gonna do, assuming I've got two concurrents here, we'll go up to twenty-four months. Okay, with the option, with commission approval, if you come to us in twenty-four months and say, look, I'm six months away from having this. Then it could be extended for additional period of time. Twenty-four months is your drop dead date, you don't have a plan in place by then, you guys put the road in.
Yeah.
And use that two fifty, is it two fifty-eight? So that needs to go in every now.
Yeah, well, I say in the bin, I think so.
Okay.
I think that's agreeable.
Okay, and it's holding up, and you wanna make, I wanna make sure when we do building permits. For these guys out there, that, that's record, is that the secondary access, that they've, they've been notified for secondary access would go east. And they've agreed to that, that needs to be part of their agreement, and they'll sell those lots. So I don't want, I don't want them coming back to the county saying, you set us up, so that needs to be very clear, whether it's in your C C and ours, I don't care.
Development agreement.
But the, yeah, something that those buyers have acknowledged, that they're buying that with the condition, if there's a train wreck, here's where they go.
Okay.
Okay?
So we're agreeing.
So I don't want any building permits issued without that in.
Yeah.
For sure.
With the bids that they have in place, are you okay if we allow our engineers to take a look at those, make sure they're?
Yeah, no, I.
I'm not doubting that they are, but just so we're, we're all on the same page.
So, can I, can I offer a couple opinions on this?
Sure.
I haven't really wanted to speak out just yet, but, um, when I originally spoke with the railroad about this. About any development on seventy-five hundred west.
Right.
They said an increase of one single car constitutes improving the crossing on seventy-five hundred west. The same, uh, the same would apply to the one out west, sure anticipating using for the emergency access. Or the one that's gated over there by Black Pine. The second thing too, um, is, depending on climate conditions. The emergency access road might be a little bit challenging going west. This spring, it was completely underwater until the end of June, and then the end of June, when it became not underwater. It's not something they wanna drive on, the, and I, and I, and I'm sorry, I, I hate to be the wet blanket on all of this. And right now, everybody probably is, well, everybody, the developers are probably not happy with me speaking now, but. I wouldn't wanna charge down this road and then have the railroad show up and say, guess what? All this increased homes, twenty homes, may not seem like that much, but each home has an average of eight trips a day. And so multiply eight by twenty, that's a significant increase.
So what does the railroad say?
Oh, they're gonna tell us to widen the, improve the crossing, they're gonna tell us to do an improved crossing on seventy-five hundred west, if that's our main access.
It's not, it's not, it's an emergency access, right?
Sorry, seventy-five hundred west exists now.
Right, but it would be just for emergency, right?
No, seventy-five is full time.
Oh, no, no, excuse me, I'm sorry.
And then you do a single increase of any, I mean, they're gonna see that as they wanna, they're on the bridge on that. The other thing to think about too, is if we put money into the escrow, the challenge we have with that, and, and this can be easily solved with more money. Two hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars in today's terms.
Right.
I guarantee you is nothing in two years as to what it needs to be at that point. So you have to account for inflation, what that number is, that's a, that's a conversation point that we need to come to. And, and unfortunately, I understand, it means more out of your pocket, and I just wanted to get those thoughts out. So that they can be kicked around and discussed, because I see potentials for issues for both of those things here.
Alright, so both of those were actually in the back of my mind, so, first thing, we need, you need to look at those bids. And then I think there needs to be some type of escalator on there, you know, whatever that would be.
Yep. I think that's pretty easy to solve.
We could, you could solve that, now the railroad, how do we solve that?
We need to start talking to them and see what, if their opinion is still the same of the increase of one house is enough to trigger. A new crossing on seventy-five hundred, or.
Have you talked to them?
When you say a new crossing, you don't mean an additional, you just want that one crossing somehow updated or?
So, so what they say, what they determine it, is you need to do an above grade or bridge crossing over it. And along with that, they generally require the closure of two existing crossings if we don't do the bridge.
If you don't do the.
If you don't do the bridge. We don't have a single crossing at this point that I'm aware of, or.
Right.
That would, that would be an option to close.
Yeah, and Harvey Ross, we've already got approval before all this, to go, to start this division, we're already a million dollars into. And then this was never brought up in those preliminary meetings, right, the railroad, you know, issue, and so that's just something that was brought upon us. You know, here last minute after we're already, you know, a million dollars in improvements on this.
So that, I would just, I would just, oh, yeah, no, we're, yeah, we're paying thousands of dollars a day in interest. But what I would suggest, if that's the case, aren't we better just to build the road, that road to nowhere, for two hundred fifty-eight thousand, we can build it now for that amount. Just build that, we've already got approval to do that, and then we're done.
Well, we still got a crossing.
Still have the issue of, of, you're still, you're still crossing the tracks.
But weren't we already approved?
Yeah.
For that, and that's the.
We definitely wouldn't have started.
But it's never brought up in any preliminaries, never brought up in any like finals, it's never been initially with train.
That'd be my concern, is we're already approved to go west, po- possibly by bringing this idea up as, you know, why build a road to nowhere? When we can use it for a bridge, maybe that's confused things.
Even if we have a road west.
But now they're saying.
They're saying, yeah, one house up there.
Well, we were approved for that.
Yeah.
I know.
You were approved by the railroad?
No, by the county.
By the county.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're into this, a couple of hundred dollars. And worry about some of the underground infrastructure and.
Yeah.
That, that original approval that came through, it, it did come through before, um, we were aware that the railroad was. Asking for what. Um, uh, to be fair, uh, state code says, uh, any, um, substantial increase to traffic. Constitutes the need for, uh, a new crossing. Um, we, Gary and I sat down with the state and said, what do you think that means? Cause the state is the authority over railroad crossing, even on county roads, and the state said, well, whatever substantial is. I think really, they're basically saying, whatever is, whatever a judge tells us it means. Now, the, the reality is, is that rule has been in place for who knows how long, even though we just found out about it, uh, a couple of years ago. Um, it's been there for, I don't know how long, and we've approved quite a few new homes on that side of seventy-five hundred, or that side of the railroad.
Yeah.
Um, now, my thought, um, as this came up, was if the bridge is gonna go in. That bridge will be the new primary access.
Sure.
And seventy-five hundred will be the secondary, and so that was intended to be the argument for the railroad. Um, once you start putting in, you know, timeframes and stuff like that, uh, you know, twenty-four or whatever, uh, months or beyond. There's just less, less probability of final outcome, I don't know what the railroad would say to us.
Yeah.
In those circumstances, so I just say, let's move forward and build a bridge, pretty dang quick.
Yeah, we agree a hundred percent, we want the bridge in, we all, as, as developers, we can't move on, we can't build any more homes until the bridge is in, right? We can't start phase two.
Right.
Until the bridge is in, so our goal with these guys, and their goal, cause of how much money they got, millions of dollars in, you know, land purchase interest. We're all on the same page to get that bridge in as quick as possible, and so that's why we're wanting to do this, and that's for that money for that reason, so.
Alright, even more bridge to get that bridge built.
Yes, the ri- the bridge is.
Just go buy a couple of those flatbed rail cars and lay them across.
Well, at this, at this point in time, one, two, three, yeah, Gary already approved it.
We bring the railroad in now.
I don't think that's what you refer to in my response.
That was the best one, I mean.
Well, it may end up, we'll have some discussions with the state and the railroad at some point in time, but anyway, so twenty-four months. Get that in.
Okay.
Um, and, and then obviously look at, make sure our engineer takes a look at those, those bids.
Well, so can we talk about timing of that, so?
Oh, I was just, uh, Dave was giving our list, and I'm finding penetration number.
Yeah.
Um, are we better just to build a road to nowhere, I mean, no, it's all matter anyway, okay, okay.
Either way, you didn't fight the railroad down there, I'd rather fight the railroad on seventy-five, other than right there. Yeah, it would be quicker to go, build.
Well, so, keep in mind, if you go west with that road, that's in worse shape than the crossing is.
Yeah, you probably could point this, well, go, going west, we would actually have to build it up, right?
Yeah, yeah, cause you're, cause you're at an elevation where it's underwater, right?
Right. So, can we just kind of, um, go some point by point, they're on the same.
Go ahead, make sure we're on the same page.
So, we have up, up to twenty-four months with the option of a com- commission approval. To extend that for additional period of time, if you, if the bridge is imminent, right? Is that, did I understand that right?
Right, twenty-four months, come back to us in twenty-four months and you'll present your case, we can either. Uh, improve it or not. Or have you put, or have you put the road in?
The amount of escrow is two hundred eighty-five thousand.
Two fifty-eight.
Two fifty-eight, I'm sorry, two fifty-eight, two fifty-eight.
Was it fit with the eight, with the necessary clause?
Today, twenty-four months from today.
Well, twenty-four months from, I guess, we've approved our.
So, from commission approval, or do you agree?
Does that escrow go with the subdivision movement or even?
Um, inflation, from two years ago.
Already scheduled our.
Don't even lie.
Right?
So, what is the plat- what is the final?
Is there anything that would keep us from planning on Tuesday? If we, is there anything that would keep us from planning on Tuesday that we have scheduled for tomorrow?
So the intention, once we get these answers, to get it on the agenda as quickly as we can.
Next week.
Does this question, does this match up with the planning commission had recommended?
Yes, yes, for the, the second. So the answer that that would be, fitting on how you work, get that engineer estimates out, and that should be more than likely.
Okay.
Not guaranteed.
I'm gonna reaffirm, the engineer estimate is what we asked for, to be forward, so that's, it's the same thing, you're in the same boat.
Okay.
We know, we're returning the estimate to them, and they're gonna see that as.
And you can, I said, you have that, Charlie.
And, and they crossed all the other Ts, and done their eyes on the rest of their proposals.
If, I, I think it's ready to be approved or denied, your choice, planning commission's recommended.
Can I ask one other question?
Sure.
Road, so what we're, what are we talking, so we make sure we're on the same page going east at this point, are we? Are we doing anything with that, or nothing?
Make sure the bin is, until the bin, even the bin's gonna be sufficient.
So, well, you're, we, the only thing is, you gotta guarantee access.
Yeah.
Whether that's a farm access or whatever.
Correct.
But, and you have to have, make sure that that's in any properties that may be sold prior to that bridge. That they recognize that they have, that's their secondary access.
No, good point, what I was referring to is the emergency access, we're not required to do any emergency access going east right now.
No, we just make sure they get access, and it's already there.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Here, we go, oh, that will be in the C C and ours, well, everybody will know this is their access.
Right. And the bridge is in, or, you know, when, when the bridge gets, that can come out, so, and you're good, then you're good.
Yeah, that's good.
Well, and we're gonna want future lots in there, so before we even talk to railroad, it'd be better for us to go ahead and say, let's just build the bridge.
Right, you're right, but we're saying that, I'm so curious of this, there's not emergency egress going east. There's not, uh, engineering, that's my understanding. But why do we, what are we putting in the, uh, closing documents?
So they're going east?
Well, I think there is already, this thing about is already going east.
Um, okay, that's what I'm talking about, the old farm road, what we're talking about.
Yeah, it's going east.
That's what I want to make.
Everybody in the house up there, I'm just gonna say.
They said.
We have our old farmer. That's what I'm talking about, I wanna make sure we're all.
No, that, that farm road has to make sure, you've got rights to use it, so some farmer can't come in, potentially.
No, I have all the rights.
All through that.
Whatever I don't own, I have signed recorded easements on everything.
Okay. There was one more thing that the planning commission did.
We have the road going over, yeah.
That was what?
Railroad consent for the emergency.
Hold on, okay, what was that again?
Uh, so the planning commission also asked for railroad consent for the emergency crossing.
And this was in just the last meeting, right? It wasn't an expired meeting.
Just the one from the last.
Yeah.
Charlie, don't you think I need that for existing on seventy-five hundred too?
No.
Are we not doing this? Sorry, should I shut up?
That's a great question.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to the question.
We gotta have.
I'll tell you my answer to the planning commission. My answer to the planning commission was, we're not giving consent to cross private property. When you're not allowed to cross private property. It doesn't, so we're not saying. You're authorized to cross railroad property. We're not saying you aren't authorized. We're just saying if there's an emergency, they've gotta have a way to get out of it.
Could the railroad come back on these folks and?
Potentially, possibly.
And in emergency.
That's not us. Okay, that'd be the railroad, right?
Shut them down.
I just, I checked that.
Yeah, and in emergency.
Another million dollars and not have that. I would do it.
Emergency today, who's who, who's the railroad gonna get mad that we cross these people across the?
I don't know what the railroad can and can't do. I've seen him, I've seen the railroad do some pretty, with their lawyers, pretty tough things to some people who have lots and lots of millions of dollars.
Well, if the railroad derels and then we go across there and they get upset at us for trying to save.
I listen, I get it.
That will be.
That's that's a existing problem as today. That's, we're not creating a new problem with that. That's an existing problem today.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure that's, you know, anything we could enforce, Charlie.
That's, that's my thought as well. I mean, it's kind of the same thing with um stream alterations during flood hazards. Uh, sometimes you go and you fix the problem and then you go through the permitting process.
The developer's aware of the potential issue here. We made him very clear. We will make it clear in the development agreement. That they take responsibility for that. If they proceed to go ahead, that's their, their option. So. All right, you clear on that?
Yes.
Rick? Wow, you guys wear a guy down.
Showed us. It's been a lot today.
Yeah, you're not done yet. Okay, we're only an hour behind. Rick, Liam, okay, we got, well, we got all our attorneys here. Okay, Bill, go ahead.
All right, this is, uh, what you're looking at is a conceptual lot layout in anticipation of or an application for a zoning map amendment. That is on the second page.
Which one you looking at? Or this one? Okay, got it, okay.
That other one in just a second. Um, this is what the rezon request is gonna look like. It's on the second page. Um, I've got a copy of the future land rez map there as well as a copy of the street regulating plan that has already been adopted for the area. Planning commission met, held a public hearing on this a few weeks ago and they're recommending approval. Um, of the two different zone changes. You've got, you've got RE three townhomes up front. And then you've got uh R one fifteen in the rear. Um, overall, it's, it's about a hundred total units, but twenty-five of those are in townhomes. There are many seventy-five-ish are in the. Uh, the. Um, single family behind it.
So twenty-five townhomes?
Twenty-five townhomes.
Seventy, seventy-five single families.
Seventy-five single families. What's the total acreage? It's about twenty-eight acres.
Twenty acres?
Twenty-eight acres.
Okay.
Sixty-three single family and twenty-six townhomes.
I'm sorry.
We're, yeah, we're a little under, we're at like eighty-nine, ninety units.
Townhomes for sale or for?
Think for sale.
You think or you know?
We don't know. I think at the time, right now in the economy. That would probably be a later on. So I think we hit the market with these for sale, but it wouldn't be immediately. So if this entire thing was uh improved. I think we wait on the townhomes for a bit.
Tell me how many single family homes again?
Sixty, yeah.
Is that what you, I thought you said like thirty-something. You got sixty-three?
Sixty-three, it's twenty-eight acres.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Okay, keep going.
One thing to keep in mind is that, um, well, a few things to keep in mind, they're gonna have to improve uh forty-seven hundred. To our current uh standards as uh required by the form-based code. Street regulation plan. Um, that's in the development agreement that we're working through right now. Um, we're also looking at having these, the potential for these uh townhomes that do face onto forty-seven hundred as. Flexible space kind of areas with uh twelve-foot ceilings and uh removable bearing walls inside. So they could be used in the future for uh retail. Type uses uh if and when that time comes. That would be a market-driven kind of question, but the idea is to provide the flexibility now so that when they. When the market is there, that it's not difficult to go in and buy those up in the office spaces or or what have you.
Okay. Um, can you say the planning commission approved this?
They did.
Yeah.
Had the public hearing, you know, uh, voted to recommend the approval of this.
Have you come to terms with the park district out there?
They have.
They have?
They changed the front portion with the townhomes and that based upon the form-based code that we have. The street regulating plan that we have out there.
Yeah.
They have a, uh, this, what I call this tail on this lot here.
Yeah.
Uh, by the townhomes, that's gonna be a a tot lot. Little small park facility for use of the the townhomes and and probably the residents that live there as well. And um as part of the development agreement, we're asking them to leave that open for the public use as well. So it's not gonna be. Uh, a gated kind of thing where you gotta badge in to get into play. Um. So, but that would be owned and maintained by the homeowners and and their association there.
Okay. What's the average lot size?
Of the single family?
On the single family.
Believe it's uh fifteen hundred square feet for fifteen thousand, running.
Yeah, it's the gross area divided by fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
So on average, I'll probably be looking at twelve-five or so.
Yeah, you've got some that are a little bit smaller down in this little area here, but then there are bigger ones around the periphery.
All right. But that doesn't take the townhomes into account.
No, cause the townhomes are in a different zoning district, okay?
Okay. Then, so is that, is this section a different zone right now?
No.
No, so they're at the.
That's why I said this is all A-one property right now.
That's right.
On the master plan.
So when we talk about uh the the grocery divided by fifteen thousand, we're assuming that the reason would take place, otherwise.
Okay, on our master plan, did we designate that as multifamily or?
We did, that's included.
Okay, all right.
It's on, oh yeah, this is not good.
Not, not this next one, it's under the same little packet there.
Got it. Okay. Charlie? Yeah, I was just gonna line up with your. That fancy. Main Street ID add out there, show you.
While he's pulling it up, I can just say it's gonna fit really well. We've worked with them to make sure that that. Does anticipate what we hoped it would do in this area.
So here's roughly eight hundred south. So their property line starts just to the south of that, right in this general area here. Actually.
I see. You got a road coming right there to nine, and nine is a big deal, right?
Good.
Okay.
A little bit of, do a bit of commercial on the southern corner and then mostly both of them.
That's good. I don't have any questions.
You okay?
I'm good.
Mr. Bullish? What's going on to the east there, Dan? It's one of our favorite developers.
Not sure yet.
We don't know?
We're already behind.
Okay.
Um, the next, the next handout, unless you have any other questions for the.
Okay, anything else, Bill? Uh, not on alley farms, but we're ready to move on to the other.
Item, item.
What's eight, what's the other one? Okay, great.
You are a lie to me.
So we have one, we're gonna turn to the, the next handout. It looks like this.
Wasn't that the one where they were gonna put in the water ski park?
Yes, it is. So, go ahead. This kind of gives you an idea where it is. According to the general plan, this is indicated to be open space.
Yeah.
That's that green block that you see there with the green circle around it. This is their proposal on the next page. It's uh, it's got twenty-seven, twenty.
We've told them no on this two times already.
So the planning commission has told them no.
Yeah.
Um, they are recommending denial. According to the motion, this is what the motion read. That the proposal is not adequately supported by the general plan, that the proposal is not supported by the general public. The proposal runs contrary to the health, sick and welfare of the general public and the area is not yet ready for the proposed change to be implemented. Any one of those is sufficient reason, but they've included all four of those in there.
So the plant commission.
Yeah, they're re- they're recommending denial of this.
Yeah.
Which is what we've told them before. So, but I did want to get to you, they, one of the things that was of concern and of lingering concern is the street trees and the installation of street trees at phase one. Um. That, the the third handout has the, that an email. Chain that goes back and forth between me and the, and developers and property owners. Uh, with regard to the installation of the street trees, they're, they're trying to work through those issues. Um, but they're not quite there yet and.
Well, we've had some discussions on that, Rick.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the, the lingering concern for staff is, and and we're not the legislative body, we're not the planning commission, but. With, as far as staff is concerned, the lingering concern that we have is with regard to. The entitlements that were associated with the phase one and that the fact that this was designated as open space. In and consideration of higher density in phase one.
Right.
Of the development. And now they're coming in after the fact and requesting a zone change, which is their right. But we think, and this is just staff thinking outside the box here a little bit, but we think that they ought to. Um, ask for a zone change for the entire. Subdivision, the entire development ought to be zoned differently because of those entitlements and because they were, it's in an A-one zoning district. In order to change from having this as open space in consideration of uh the um. The higher density that they got in the earlier phases, they really ought to go in and resume the entire development as uh RE fifteen.
It'll pull the southern lots out of the class, or potentially pull them out of the cluster subdivision and uh just have them be standard uh lots at that point.
Because that subdivision's already built, isn't it?
Right, so this is if you guys wanted to go in the direction of saying yes instead of no. If you wanted to say yes, we recommend also improving the subdivision to the south, just so we don't have any non-conforming.
I've told them no for three years. They, they ended up with that piece here as open space. They got some additional density. They were paid for that piece.
That's exactly our concern.
And so what I've told them. On more than one occasion, if they wanna come back with a proposal that takes whatever acreage that is. And donates that or gives that to open space or grid, some other park district, whatever, but to give that to them carte blanche, no.
So what they've done.
I'm gonna support the planning commission.
What they've done to try and um uh accommodate that is they've got an agreement with the park district. They're actually gonna be doing. Um, I think double, more than double, uh, the. The minimum fee that the park district wants to see. So they'll donate five thousand dollars per lot. And my understanding is, and I still haven't received final confirmation of this, the park district is also expecting water rights as well. And so I think it's water rights from the property to go to the park district as well as five thousand dollars per lot.
And or maybe the value of five thousand dollars per lot in, in water to the park district.
So the park district has recommended approval or at least provided their support uh based on that uh donation. But the planning commission has recommended.
Okay.
So there is something that came up with the planning commission, at least one of the planning commissioners mentioned um the possibility of saying yes and and. We know that he doesn't speak for the whole planning commission, but um maybe saying yes to, so there's a lot being stuffed in from Pat's project here, right? And then assembly acres stuffed in here, these guys already stuffed here. So the thought was, well, maybe they get some lots along here and along there. And that is another part in the future. Um, and so there's maybe a way to give them a little money as well as give the community something more, but. It's really gonna be up to you guys. And if you guys want the planning commission to consider that specifically, we could send it back.
Well, unless I get outvoted here, it's gotta come back. If they can sell it to the planning commission with a yes, bring it back.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Sound good?
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
You were moving on long. Now we're only thirty-eight minutes. All right, Gary.
Yes, sir.
Let's see if we're gonna get, get you some style points.
All right.
We can cancel with three-thirty meeting.
Oh, there you go, Steve.
What?
Yeah.
We've got you out to the.
Done already. Take care.
All right, Gary, go ahead. Discussion regarding construction management for twelve street segments.
Get the contract for tomorrow and all.
Okay.
Get this in front of you.
No, you don't need, you don't need to sign it.
That's for your reading.
Two places for me tomorrow.
All right, who is it, Tucker?
This is with Stanley Consult. So this is the construction management for our twelve street project, this is the segment four.
Okay.
So we went through the process for the RFP, we got them, went through the contract process with them. Um.
Received bids on it.
Yeah. And yeah, it was, we're, we're pretty happy with Stanley. We like Stanley. They do good work. I think just out there with. The, the problems that can occur out there, I think it'd be really good to have Stanley out there just because they have a lot of.
So how far west does this take us?
So we're gonna start at seventy-one and we're hoping to get past or up to eighty-three, so past all the houses.
Okay.
With the money that we have. But we haven't received uh exact quantities from the, the designer yet. So we're, that's kind of, we're hoping to get to eighty-three hundred, but we're, we're waiting on those right now.
And we've got what, ten million set aside?
Ten million.
Yeah. Will that pay for this?
It's gonna be tight.
I, if I'm being honest, I don't think we'll get there. It might pay for it, but there's seventeen change orders.
Well, that's why we're hoping Stanley can help us out.
I don't forget change orders. Gary's told me no more change orders.
I'll, I'll bring it then.
Tucker might have. Um, okay, so it may not get us to eighty-three, but we're gonna spend the ten million.
We're pretty confident we'll for sure get to seventy-nine commissioners.
Okay.
We'd love to get out beyond the houses, which are.
Well, that'd be nice.
Maybe another block.
Yeah.
West of there. To go to eighty-three hundred, it's just with, with current construction prices. I'm just being honest with you. I don't, I don't think we'll get that far.
No.
So we, talking with Brooke, we'll have a little more than ten million, cause there's some money left over from the previous phases, from right, Gary, so.
Yeah.
Pretty much they ain't gonna pay for this contract.
Really?
Yeah. And then. So that'll help us a little bit, but.
Have we got any money after that ten million?
Zero, this is it. This is breaking the big bang.
Okay, we've had this conversation before, but with the change in uh. The inland port coming in out there to the property that's located about where we're gonna end this, they become a very important uh. Component of going forward before we fund anymore.
That's right.
Cause they're didn't, they're didn't need that. In fact, they're the ones that will drive the need for that road to be improved west of eighty.
Yeah.
Wherever we get, eighty-one, eighty-three, I don't care.
And optimistically, we'll make it to the boundary of that inland port commissioner, at which point we might just have to tell them.
That's, well, I think we need to be prepared for that.
Yeah.
Just so everybody's on the same page.
Yeah. I mean, obviously.
They've got fifty million, so.
We'll take it as far as we can, but I just, I'm not comfortable. We'll make it where we need to.
No.
You wanna bring up, we basically.
You'll make it as far as we can.
So commissioners, on the, on the last two phases of construction we've done at twelve street, we had an agreement with Weaver Basin. Where we compensated them for a certain portion of the work because of the impacts to their line. The reason is wherever we hiked the existing bitches, we had multiple crossings across the road. That had impacts to them where they had to loop their, their water line. The previous agreements that were negotiated prior to my. Well, even prior to my appointment here in county, um, had us paying for approximately about. Thirty, I believe it was thirty percent of their costs. Okay, on this phase of the project, we tried to raise. Our storm rain elevate, you know, tried, tried to minimize impacts, tried to raise the road elevation, tried to minimize impacts to their water lines. With the intent to go back in and renegotiate that to have less payment to them on their, on their facilities.
Yeah.
Um, with the amount of crossings we've had to add, we, it looks like we're.
We would be on the hook for about a mile of the mile and a half of the project for impacts to it.
Hmm.
So initially I met with them and I see, this was before we knew what the full impact was to their water line. We didn't know how our crossings would impact them. And they were open to renegotiating it. However, I fear that if we try to renegotiate it. It might end up worse for us than thirty percent of the original. So.
Really?
My question for you is, do we want to try to renegotiate it and risk opening ourselves up to more cost and thus. Less distance we're able to reconstruct, or do we just keep where we're at?
So you think we could end up in worse? Spot?
I really do. I really do.
And we tried to think of if we can get rid of some of these storm rain crossings, because those are the, that's where the majority of the problems was happening. But we, in order to make it so that property owners have a place to discharge their water, to fill, to drain.
Yeah.
We need all, we all, and we've added a few more just because we wanna be able to drain people's property.
And part of the biggest.
A lot of drains out there.
Yeah, part of the biggest problem we had on the previous phases and we'll have on this one, in order to widen the road. You can't widen it until that ditch is piped.
Yeah.
That provides the real estate to widen the road on top of.
Right.
Actually constructed. So, um, yeah, it's a little tricky.
Okay. So, we renegotiate or not?
I don't think so.
That's how I see it.
I just.
No reason, if that's. If that's a possibility, let's not get ourselves, let's not negotiate ourselves out of some money.
Yeah, that's kind of what our thoughts were, commissioners, our recommendation and. Just wanted to tee that off to you while we have a few extra minutes.
You okay with that, Sean?
I'm, I'm good with it. Yeah, I trust these guys.
Alright, good, good.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just a different animal out there with all those land drains. I mean, boy.
You know, I've, I've always said this.
It is what it is.
I've always said this, the minute you start digging.
Yeah.
You never know what you're gonna find, right? You heard that from me before?
Harvey, have you heard that? I'm sure he has. He's a digger. Alright, what else?
That's.
Yeah.
So this will be on tomorrow's commissioned.
Got it.
Uh, agenda.
And you're good with this, this Stanley. We, we used that before, right?
They did the last year.
Yeah, we're good.
And quite honestly, commissioners, if I'm being honest with you, their, their help on the previous phase, I think helped us negotiate some of the change orders down from what they could.
Really?
Um, they're a good advocate for us on this. Uh, hopefully. Hopefully we're avoiding that. On this phase, but uh, we have a new, new designer on this phase.
We do?
We, oh yeah, we do. So. We uh. New, a new, switched horses a little bit, so to speak, and uh. Hopefully.
When do we go to bid on this?
As soon as they can wrap the plans up.
Alright.
You say two, three weeks maybe, hopefully, month?
Um.
We're hoping by now.
So the plan is start this right after the first year or whenever.
We wanna start, yeah, right now.
If it was ready today, we bid it today.
Oh, would we?
Yeah.
Alright.
I, I love having it bid and awarded by November, by Christmas. It gives the contractors options to start on the underground.
Well, this is not a bad time to start bidding.
No, 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 no.
But it's underground guys. It actually, we're kind of, we're kind of getting out, we had a lot of UDOTS projects, the sooner we can bid it.
Yeah.
So we actually get a little bit of economy.
This is actually a good time.
Yeah, so.
And hopefully it can work, depends, depends on the winter we get out there.
Yeah, we don't need no.
Yeah. Okay, Jim. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. Look, we're back on schedule.
No item ten?
No.
No. Oh, wait, I don't know about ten. Uh, yeah, no item ten, sorry.
Sorry.
There may be in a line.
I think there's an eleven.
Because it's done or because?
Yes, so. If, if you.
So. Just really quickly, um, I sent over some small policy changes to the. Policy group on the new hire requirements and alcohol and drug policy. Um, because right now, our current policy says that we require pre-employment drug testing after twenty four hours. And we wanted to change that to after forty eight hours. Just to give candidates. An extra day to go down to work med, so. That's. The change I wanted to make in the policy.
So what does that mean? They get drug tested?
They get dirty things. So once they sign their offer.
Okay.
They have forty eight hours, you know, rather than twenty four hours to go down to.
Good idea. That's reasonable.
It's still gonna show up in.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's still good, but it gives them an extra day for those that travel farther.
That's good.
So, and then one other.
User friendly.
Yeah. Yeah, just.
How we are.
I haven't been here very long.
And then also the vehicle use and maintenance policy. So Carrie and Sean actually um worked uh with this. And we would like to change the policy that requires the risk manager Carrie to verify that a driver has an active driver's license.
Oh.
Um, because we found out that there were a couple individuals that didn't have one.
And you still took the car?
Well, it was equipment, so county equipment like. Tractors and stuff at the transfer station.
Um.
So.
I got a problem with that. What? Because sometimes all the, some of the levels of the people that we can get out of the. At some of our places, like.
Grant.
Or at the transfer, some of them are, they don't have an active driver's license. And so. But they're, they're good operators on equipment, so I'm.
I think.
I don't wanna handcuff them, this is my problem, I.
I think state law. Requires you to have. A valid driver's license to drive equipment. Right?
Oh, well, it did to drive, to drive an, a highway vehicle, it does. To drive a, a highway vehicle, it does, but. If uh, a, a loader or a s- a backhoe or a skid steer or what have you. A track hoe doesn't require any kind of state license to do that.
Okay.
As I know. Yeah, I, I'm not.
I don't know.
I'm not aware. I mean, obviously if they're driving on a state highway, the state requires it. I don't know about equipment.
Yeah, I thought, um.
Now, Emily, to back you up.
Yeah.
If they're taking, for instance, if they were taking. A, a big loader from the transfer station out to. The shops to be repaired.
That's a different.
They would have to be. But if they're just using it within the, the footprint of the facility by which they work. I just don't wanna, I think that could. Just coming up with these ideas, I've dealt with this before. And since.
What I do is I've called USIP, asked them under the insurance, they know the state law too.
Right.
Could, are, are we putting ourselves? In harm's way if we allow these guys to operate internally, transfer station, not take that on the road without a driver's license?
Yeah, okay. I will do that then.
Or they'll tell you whether the state laws, they may say, hey, the state law requires it anyway.
Yeah, I'll, I'll verify, because I thought um, the state law. And off highway vehicles required a valid driver's license. So that's the research that Sean and Carrie did, so.
Okay.
I will verify with that before we.
Off highway vehicle requires a state, uh. A license.
A valid driver's license.
O H V requires a valid driver's.
Well, they, they may be right.
Boy, that's new to me. I'm not saying they're not right, I just, let's double check it.
Yeah, okay, I'll double check that one.
Boy. So, and if, if that's the case. Do we know for a fact we've got people out there? Operating equipment without driver's license?
Um, I believe we did, and that's why we are recommending. Changing the policy to say that Carrie as a risk manager needs to verify that they have a valid driver's license, so.
Well, I like that policy change. Let's just make sure. That it's clear under state statute.
Okay.
I am quoting them like that if you'd like.
Yes, that would be great. I think Sean and Carrie looked at it.
Here's, I'm gonna go one more step if I can. I don't mean to belabor this, but I'm going to.
He's gonna take just a few more minutes.
But I mean, it's not four o'clock yet.
No. Go ahead. You know, we're talking about trying to help the people. Transition, and a lot of times they'll get out of. There's two. Don't, there's two. Courts. Some of these people have to go to. They have to go to a court. By which they see a judge. To get out of jail. Then they gotta go to a driver's court. To get, to get their license back or with some kind of provision. And if you've got a guy, and sometimes that's six months to a year later before you can get to the driver's license court. Old George Garwood, if you remember him, the mayor of South Bockton was one of those.
George, he's a good boy.
He was one of those judges.
Yeah.
Anyway.